This conference will now be recorded.
I call this meeting a regular meeting of the City Commission to order. Shannon, roll call please.
Mayor Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Gandy.
Here.
Commissioner Trigino.
Here.
Mr. Voege.
Here.
Mr. White.
Mr. Voege, would you please sign our invitation?
Please fire your hand straight with me. Dear Lord, thank you for your blessings you bestowed on our community. Please be with us this evening as we make wise decisions for the benefit and future health of Loughington. We come here tonight with your presence guiding us to work together as one. In your name we pray, amen.
Amen. I'd like to lay the message to the blackberry, the state of America, and to the three brothers of the world who stand as one nation. May this world take the Jesus' cross. The little bit of blackberry, the state of Chicago, the city of the temple, part of friendship among the united cultures. Maybe see. I'm with you.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda submitted.
Thank you for the approval of the agenda and any further discussion, correction, addition. Harry, nothing? Shannon?
Commissioner Gandy.
Yes.
Mr. Roberts.
Yes.
Mr. Voege.
Yes.
Mr. Trigino.
Yes.
Mr. White.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for consideration of events since September 11th, 2023, as submitted.
I was just saying on the adoption of this, any discussion, correction, addition? Harry, nothing? Shannon?
Commissioner Trigino.
Yes.
Mr. White, yes. Mr. Voege.
Yes.
Mr. Gandy.
Yes.
Mayor Roberts.
Yes. All right, bring this to our staff report. Shannon, do you have anything to say? You have nothing to say. Let's get.
Nothing.
All right. Eric, I'm your police chief. Welcome to our meeting.
Thank you very much. Well, not a whole lot, but we did have one of our newest officers start today. This is Betty S. Vega, non-certified officer. She used to work at Norley. She's also going to be a part of our newly implemented two-week training program, which she'll receive a lot of in-house training prior to actually going to the FTO program where she receives the on-job training. Kayla Gomez, our non-certified is actually in the academy. She did suffer injury last week, but she should have an update today that she can give us for tomorrow to make sure she should be okay to complete the academy. She will be graduating, I believe, this December, as long as everything turns out okay, come back to the support force. We've had a few applications we've received. Most were non-certified, but we do have one certified officer that's willing to come over to us, pending what we know from basically, unless we are with that. Got several officers going to training in the next few months. Some did just recently in tin training, so we're basically trying to fill our offices with more instructors, FTOs, and background investigations to help us with our own in-house training so we don't have to go out as much as we should. Let's say there's some aspect of it. Building, we started some work on the building for renovations of the OP building. It started in the break room, and once that's done, we're looking into some renovations.
Questions? We were, I believe, two down off of rehire. Do we currently have any position?
We actually, I believe, have three openings right now later in the looking time.
Good luck with that.
Thank you.
All right, and thank you. Party.
Hello, Mr. Mayor, Members of the Commission. So Charles Palena, which is our Horton rep for the ambulances, he contacted me last week and said that our new ambulance should be completed by the end of November, and we should be able to fly up there first week of December sometime and inspect it, look at it, make sure everything looks good, and then they'll deliver it to us. So hopefully before the end of the year, we will have that ambulance. I've received the new updated quote for the brush truck. We received the money through Capital Outlay. We're waiting on Dora Batista for the approval, then I can complete the contract. And at that point, once we finish the contract or do the contract, when we put it under contract, it's 547 days from the time we do the contract to time of delivery. So Capital Outlay approved the 300,000, and the truck is costing 295,507, so we're right at that one. It was when I first quoted it last year, it was at 207, 2,000. So of course, we're inflation, and I'm glad that the state gives us the 300,000 because those quotes are only good for 30 days. So that's why I'm trying to get all the paperwork done and get that going. I've received one quote for the remodel in our station that we're doing through Capital Outlay. I've contacted different companies. Two have actually came and looked at it and wanted to give me a quote. And then I've also contacted four companies for the AC heating units on the top of our truck hauls, because right now, we're using, during the winter, we have to use like little propane heaters or diesel heaters that the truck haul fills with exhaust, the fumes, and it's not good. So I'm trying to get those changed to the roof-mounted units that we were having to burn the fuel and everything. And right now, I've had one company kind of look and I've still received a quote, and that's been almost a month. Candy Cane, they have tested all the hydrants in the city. There were approximately 40 hydrants that they could not test because either they were leaking or they just weren't working, or they tested them and they don't have enough flow, enough pressure to test them. Other than that, I've got my numbers for August. We had 236 total EMS calls. We had 45 inter facility transfers, 61 DOA cancel or refusals. We had 13 airport transfers, 12 tail calls, and nine fire calls. So our fire calls did drop last month, which is good. Other than that, I don't think I got us pretty much.
Mr.?
Mr. Ball. So with the hydrants that are not working, I mean, it seems to be an issue. What are we going to do to see if we can rectify it?
Water Department, one company. I instructed them to buy five hydrants without knowing this number about a month ago when we had to break on 13th and Jefferson because they had one on the shelf. We now have six on the shelf, five, but we need to... Not all of these 40 necessarily have to be replaced, but they certainly have to be worked on.
Right.
And that's something the water department is going to have to take care of.
Okay.
This is 40 out of what, 107, about 110, somewhere in there, so that's 35% failure rate.
And then I will... The state has also contacted me because they want to come in and do a pre-Iso audit, and we will get get on that as well. That and the Ben Power is what I'm afraid we're going to get hit on the most. It's our last ISO. We had seven people per ship, and right now we still have the two commissions froze, so we're only six on the ship.
I think also strategically planning on which ones you need to work on. I think you guys probably are already thinking that out as well to make sure that the ones that we definitely need first, we get done first, to make sure they save here.
And then we do have our tanker. However, that's fixed on 11th, so some work on it. That's one of the things we got to get worked. We used the carryover from our state of firefights last year to do it on.
Chief, I believe you said the ones up by the hospital are in good shape.
The ones up at the hospital are in real good shape. The ones down by the cheese plant, they have really good flow. About the corns? What? I'm going to be honest, there's one right there in the corner of, what is that, East and Washington, that they, I talked to Bernard, I think it was last week, and they went out to test it, and it does have a little, just a little bit of water coming out of the, I believe you said something about something's broke, so they have the valve closed or something. So I'm not sure on that exactly what it is, but I know it was, it's a brand new hydrant. It's the one they put in when the building was built. So I don't know if something happened during the building process, and that was something that got overlooked. But that was one thing that I did speak with Bernard.
Going back strategically, making sure like that one's.
Was this compared to what the numbers were as far as hydrants not working last year?
I'm not sure. I'd have to compare it. I'd have to compare last year's. I know we had some that were not working and broke, and of course, the water department gets that because what I do, and I ask, I, well, I said Candy Cane, I had them come in and they test them. They send me the paperwork. I give it to Bernard, and then they send us the invoice. We split the cost of it for them to test. The, as far as the hydrants that were bad last year, I mean, they know about them, and we gave them the copy as well.
Yeah, I'd like to see the number, then if we're addressing them, then we're going in the right direction, that they were going backwards.
Do you have a date for the ISO?
No, I do not. They did not give me a date. They just said they want to come in the near future to do it. It's a pre-Iso inspection, so they can look at everything we have. They can give us suggestions of, hey, you need to fix this, you need to fix that. Then we can get stuff done before they come to do the actual inspection. But I like how all my docs are in a row and view that way. If he comes and he's like, oh, everything looks good, hey, we're done. But I know that's easier said than done, so that's, I'm trying to work on it and get everything in order. It's a lot of stuff.
Anything further? Mr. Voege.
All I can do is repeat what I always repeat, eat local, shop local, buy local. Again, anything you can do to help out our community. I'm passionate about our community. We need to take care of ourselves. Buy gas, whatever you got to do. I'd like to thank everybody for being here, ladies, gentlemen, city staff, apartment heads, and just hoping that we can have some good dialogue tonight, positive dialogue.
Always a good wish.
Thank you for leaving now.
Yeah. I'm big. Mr. White. Commissioner Gandy.
I don't think we can electric for in the power back on my house and my light that was leaning way over out of the street. I just hope sometime in the near future to put a pole back in because it's dark.
They don't know.
I mean, I thought I thought it's really, not really concerned, but it's just dark. It's real dark in the neighborhood, that one light job. So other than that, thank you. Appreciate you guys working, all the work you guys do. Other than that, thanks to the water department for fixing the leak over by the school. Yeah, it's great. I just dropped some dirt today. It's awesome. So other than that, I do not have any.
Look that light here.
Probably. We'll find out. They're going to pull it or something.
That's good work.
Good evening.
Good evening. Do you have anything this evening? Not yet.
Not yet, not yet.
You're saving up. All right.
Our place from the one. The department charge.
Really well. They caught it. We are now entering September try elections in September.
It's good.
It's great.
Great. Thank you for coming on board. I appreciate it.
Got to thank everyone who's in the department. They've been doing the work and keeping it going, so.
I appreciate it. Mr. Miranda.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, members of the public. The latest GRT figures, which are from July, came in at 865,000. This compares with 1 million last month and compares with 1 million for the same period last year. That puts our trailing 12-month GRT average at $904,000 per month. As part of the North Love Soft Wall Field Lighting Project, we have engaged ARC to replace eight utility poles before the new lights can be installed. However, the poles cannot be delivered for another six weeks. The water leak mentioned by Commissioner Gandy at the last meeting on 11th Street has been repaired, but not, the pavement has not been patched yet. Last Friday at 10:45 a.m., I made a surprise spot inspection at the Loughington Animal Shelter. I found staff on hand conducting business. I personally inspected every room and kennel on the premises. I found it to be clean, tidy, and the animals to be in good shape with sufficient food and water. I will continue to make my presence known at the shelter going forward. Next, to address a request by several Commissioners, I would like for Jason Boyston of the Parks and Rec and Cemetery Department to briefly address the commission on its short-term and long-term plans for park improvements.
Good evening.
Mayor, Commissioners, City Managers, I listed about five things that we're working on right now. Splash pad, we began trimming trees at Chaparral Park. We're fixing and upgrading the sprinklers at Shaft. And we're going to be, tomorrow, we're going to be fixing the Avenue D leak at the park. We're down with the lights of the basketball volleyball skate park. That's all completed. We hauled off, well, we trimmed about six trees and we hauled off about 30 loads of wood out there. Plan for next year moving forward, we're going to continue to maintain upgraded sprinklers at all parks. We're going to continue to maintain and upgrade the bathrooms and other facilities at the parks. We're gonna, I'm going to get a quote about shredded rubber because that's a, that's a big issue. See if we can get some shredded rubber around the playgrounds. We're going to concentrate on the beautification of Lake Shoreside and just continue to trim the trees until we get it all squared away and maintain ones that are trimmed.
Questions?
No, have you had anybody? I know you put out there a sparesed program. Have you had anybody?
Not yet.
Apply yet? No.
And we have one up position. That leaves us one major work. So hopefully we get somebody knowledgeable and willing to help us out with what we need to get done.
On the bathrooms, we talked before about spares with the doors. Be able to get doors with locks so that way there we're going to keep down the vandalism.
Yeah, we put all new locks on there, and all my guys have keys. Laura, code enforcement is willing to help us out to lock it up on weekends and stuff like that. I just got to get a sign to notify the public for the hours.
What are the hours, please?
I was thinking about 6:5. Over to do sunrise and sunset.
I think, very similar, I'd just like to make a recommendation on the trees out there, maybe find revenue for drip system. I'd say the heat and the climate here is, when they're planting the trees, I always say they should have planted them in a row even though it might look more uniform out there and not make it look like everything's natural because it needs a drip system. It just can't handle the heat in trees, and that's why they're, that's why they're dead. I mean, you could water all you want on the sprinkler system, but they're not getting that, that water. And I was thinking even the ones down the riverbed. We're not going to do the riverbed no more. Well, as we'll cover it, somebody won't fall and break their leg. But off on that riverbed, before you cover it, run some tubing down there with some water, and that way you could feed all them trees down the, down the little riverbed and, you know, at least have a drip system to have.
Yeah, I know the trees along, over by the flagpole, left-hand side by the riverbed, termites out of the riverbed. We're finding big old termites coming out of the limbs, so.
Like I said, going back to that riverbed, we're not going to use the curb. Somebody will fall and hurt themselves. Thank you.
In the next few weeks, we will be moving payroll so that it's back under the Finance Department as per the recommendation of both our auditor and Ms. Cooper. Next, I would like to bring before the commission a problem that we have discussed before. In the future, we will be again considering a ban on parking semis and all trucks over 15,000 pounds within city limits except for local deliveries. This is designed to improve the quality of life for citizens and reduce damage to our roads and easements. However, I was approached by a gentleman, Mr. Chris Woodell, two weeks ago, I don't know if he's here tonight, who lives on Tyler Avenue, and he's an over-the-road trucker. He respects and wants to obey our laws. He's typically on the road three weeks out of every month. He had been parking his rig in the county fairgrounds park a lot because he does not want to park a tractor-trailer on Tyler. This is not an example of a local water hauler or someone with a roustabout truck. Mr. Woodell asked me if the city had any options so that he could respect our laws but still have a place to park his truck. I had no answers for him. I wanted to ask the commission's input on this problem as it is a legitimate concern to all of us. I just wanted to put it out there because we'll be considering that ordinance again in the future. I don't know, something to think about for the future. I know how you feel, sir. But this is not a local, well, this is true. Our September utilities billing was 540,000 as compared to 448,000 for the previous month. This number is one that I will be tracking every month to see if our improved efforts at commercial customer billing are having any effects. And we still have not changed any rates yet, so. Lastly, as...
I'm sorry. I didn't know if you had additional. I know you're looking at, can we go ahead and look at setting a, a time for a special meeting on that?
Yes, sir.
Whether it's in November, whatever, I'd like to get it at least on our calendar to know that. Not tonight, obviously, but so we can get it in, with the holidays and all that going on.
Yes, sir. And lastly, I consulted with the city attorney regarding fresh water billing for HF Sinclair Navajo Refinery. If I may refresh the commission's memory, in April of 2022, we had suspended billing Navajo for fresh water use due to a billing error on our end. It was agreed that to avoid confusion, we would change out the reading on to the water usage there of our three water wells on their property for which we own the water rights and the wells. Bear in mind, this has nothing to do with the 1992 negotiated agreement with Navajo for the wastewater discharge, which they have been paying. So our three freshwater meters were changed out to be in gallons rather than barrels in December of 2022. By mutual agreement, we were to take the average usage number over a period of three months and use that number to pass bill them back to April 2022. On July 18th of this year, we had three months of data, and we sent them a bill for $514,132.85 for 15 months of water consumption at an industrial rate. Since that time, I have emailed, spoken to, and met with managers. They have agreed that this is the amount they do owe the city, yet they have not paid. This plant uses approximately 13 to 14 million gallons from our aquifer each month. Now the bill is approximately $600,000, and we still have not received payment. My concern is that why should we show them any different treatment than a residential customer who hasn't paid their bill? That 600,000 will go straight into the utility fund and pay for some much-needed water system improvements. I have told Navajo management that if this bill was a problem for them, that we would work with them. However, I doubt this bill is a problem for them as HF Sinclair netted in the last fiscal year $2.3 billion in profits, and that's billion B. So unless we've received payment, it would be my proposal to shut off our water supply to the Navajo plant, giving them a one-month shut-off notice, and I can think of no other resolution for this.
There's only three.
And on behalf of September, any questions?
Question? Having mad with them, I, you know, and they were agreeable, I do not understand why.
I just feel like I'm getting my...
Dealing with both local gas companies that deal with, majority of them pay usually 30 to 60 days. You always have the ones that pay 60 to 90, and then you have the really special ones that pay 180 plus. So the real question I would have is what concern will we have by shutting off the water? Is, you know, is there some type of, by doing that, what liabilities that put us at, you know, based on, you know?
And that's why I wanted to weigh in with that.
Right. That would be my biggest concern there is like, if we did shut off the water without notification or something like that.
Oh, no.
But you understand what I'm saying, you know? Because they're going to say no matter what, how many times we send, you know, 30-day notice, 60-day notice, they just turn it off, then they're going to have a lot, push that liability back on us or try to do. So that would be my biggest concern there. You know, at some point, you just have to cut it off.
It makes sense.
And I had, we had five members of their management team from both here and Artesia in that conference room six weeks ago. They're like, yeah, we agree with your number. We have money set aside, but each time it's a different story.
Did you have a legal counsel?
In that same room? No, the mayor was there. I was there, and sometimes it's best to have legal counsel. I think that should be, always have legal counsel when you're negotiating or something like that. I think, I mean, because I'm not, I'm not saying nothing negative towards you, Dave, but I'm just saying that I would highly recommend you have legal counsel on to do something, that any type of negotiation or saying something to happen with you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir. Any other questions? Seeing that, Ms. Ball.
Seeing Mayor and Commissioners. So the, my TPF projects to redo Avenue J, 13th, North Main, and Central. The Ramirez and Sons, I talked to them today. They're actually going to start Wednesday evening. They hope to get out there and get some cones set up on Avenue J. Should take them a week to a week and a half to do that section on Avenue J, and then they will move over to North 13th Street to do that section from Jefferson to... So I'll keep the PSAs updated. I want to talk it with my assistant Kevin and have him issue this PSA on Wednesday tomorrow. And we'll also do it to Miranda's post on Facebook so that we're able to... And we'll also do it to Miranda's post on Facebook so that we're able to use where this is. It's gonna start some more things.
And that's thirteenth street?
Yeah, Avenue J, fifth to seventh will be first.
I knew that.
Yeah, just that two block area. And then they'll move to thirteenth from Jackson to
Jackson, which is that, is that the little street that just kind of an alleyway with a little bit of?
With a little bit of chip sill on it?
Yeah, pretty much. Okay. All right. Just making sure I'm on the right group. Right at the end of where the
Well, like
Yeah, that kind of goes around with back fence there.
Yes.
Crystal?
Yes.
Where's our Iskemel Pis at?
I didn't even get one myself.
She went to the last end. She didn't bring back Iskemel.
Oh, I didn't. She went to the last.
Crystal, were you able to get in contact with the County Electric?
So yes, McCammy Electric told me that they did not want to pursue an M O U with the city on maintaining those streetlights that are being put in on Avenue D and B. So N M D O T has let us know those are our streetlights. So we're, how are we going to maintain it? Because we do not have a truck get up that height to switch the lights. We don't have a truck to restand up one of those poles if one of them goes down. So yeah, I'm kind of going to meet with the city manager and see what kind of plan we got to come up with because we're gonna have to come up with something.
The reason that we didn't is because we don't stock them poles. We don't use them poles. So it would be something that we would have to bring in special order and keep on stock. And that's the reason why.
Okay, yeah, they did not clarify. I asked, but I did not get anything back.
Right. That's why.
I figured it was more to that available than anything. So I don't know if there was something where we actually bought the poles to have on stock, then we could still talk about a service agreement with McCammy Electric. That was things I was gonna go over. Try to see what we could come up with. The main street project, last week at the meeting, while I was not here, I did get the minutes and I was able to go over them. They do have a problem with the substrate because it got so wet, so saturated. So they're not being able to pass a lot of their compaction still now. So they are working with what they're gonna do. Are they gonna tear a bunch of them, tear them back out or continue and let it dry? So I'll find out what they put in this. So we like the rain, but it did hold up the project quite a bit. Any further questions for me?
Kristin? Hearing them. Patrick, Mayor Commissioners, don't have anything new. I've got a few comments on a couple of the action items if they come up. Questions if there are any.
Any liabilities if we do shut their water off?
Well, yeah, obviously they could come back and say that, so. Issues with cooling towers, issues with the numbers, other things there. And so I think it's a matter of going through our ordinance, making sure that that is literally clear to them when it's gonna happen, give them enough opportunity. So, you know, it's the same thing if we shut up water to another commercial user or private user. You know, you could, you could say if we cut the water off to Mr. and Mrs. X and now they don't have any water and see what he gets involved. You know, how far out are we responsible for that? So it's pretty clear. I think they'd agree that they owe it. And unless we can get some kind of response out of them or unless you want to just let them, you know, bribe the city for that, I'm like, that's certainly up to you. You know, we've got to decide when we're gonna make that decision. There could be some consequences, but I think giving them notice and letting them know what's gonna happen should be.
Have we? We followed it with like a certified letter?
No, certified letter.
A statement?
Billing statement, just to reassure or lend the, of that or something like that, just to make sure we have documentation saying, hey, we resent this, we resent this.
I've sent a numerous emails. I mean, we had management here, just phone calls.
If I was just
With the cutoff notice would be delivered in person by certified mail and by email, so we would cover our bases.
Okay. Ms. Miranda, knowing the other issues we're having with the meters and reporting to the state, these would be our wells also. Are the meters that are currently installed there, do they meet the standards and how are we going to be able to report those per month also?
They're probably not. They're probably the same E X nineties that the state took off their remesas with, like Justin Teer.
Yeah, we probably need to look into it. Oh, hey, oh, I'm sorry. Can you pay back your debt?
We can apply for variance and it'll be at our district office to accept it. They're willing to work with us on that part. You know, we actually have about five installed. We still have people installing thermometers and sound like meters. What we did, if we will, that we started as present city, we put a meter and there was a couple of them that we didn't get to service. Let's get out of those meters box. But I feel that we can refer those. And I want to give one of the city representatives to say, you know what? Let's choose a meter that the state is willing to work with. You know, as long as we communicate with the state, the state's gonna allow us. We don't respond, you know, within a week or something. We think we're not pushing anyone. But I stay in contact with the state, the state. We have to apply for variance. I have the authority, we either the commission or city manager stating that we want to apply for variance. Believe the meters, the ones that are the presence, they're gonna work with us because we told them we would request them. And you're talking about any word between two to four months to replace these meters.
I did request the variance today.
So, you know, we're not overlooking anything or just, I don't know why, well, they gave us a reason why they took off the X I because supposedly after so much time that the meters are failing due to battery malfunctions, you know, they gave us a few excuses. That's why they took off the list. But they never get any specific date when it was taken off. So by me replying, saying, hey, we're gonna make it right. We want to make it right. And I, like I told my city managers that I'd like to leave it in. The gentleman that's gonna put in the skating system, or maybe if we apply for the total list, that's gonna push back on the right time. So, you know, because you're gonna spend, I forget how much money you're gonna put into the skating system. Because we was adapted the Y S meter that we have today. But by changing the schematic side, there's the problem in better than the new meter. So that's the reason why we're applying to figure out whether we bring it up to the city manager or the city council or who's gonna wanna answer that question of which meter to choose because we have all this. So.
David, you have a, from experience, like how long do they typically take to respond to a variance or?
They can respond within forty-eight hours.
Okay. So we should have hopefully some sort of an answer by the end of this week.
With the issue stating that we're gonna work on ordering, they want to accept what we have in stock now to give a meter reasons. But we have to decide and I have to say if they would come down and work with me because the way those meters are supposed to be installed, we don't have maybe three buildings big enough and we have to change the whole thing. If they're just supposed to have a foot before and a foot after the meter, it's supposed to be flanged, original space. I mean, the other well, the well, they're all four by six. I mean, we just have everything like stacked with such short closure. I'd have to say, you know, we're gonna mark all these buildings down and we're gonna retrofit everything and you don't need enough money in a year to fix it. So that's the reason to ask the state to come down to give us the variance and put in a meter that we can all agree on to work to move forward. Because you gotta have a foot before and a foot after. So the meter reasons are true. That's what the state requires. Only the new buildings that just put up a quarter mile, other ones that have that space. But our old existing wells do not eat the project, no, they're not even close. So that's the reason, you know, we can just work with them, ask them to come and help us and see what they, the changes they reply. If you get that better off and arguing with them or trying to debate with them, let's just say, you know, what comes out, this is what we got, what we forced out of it. If you start contradicting what they want, like you're saying, they could cut us off. Just like we decided, we said good, same thing, we can say, I can do it. It would be a box. So I don't know whose decisions those are. But I'm worried we're whatever somebody asks.
Still falls over management. Yeah, Ms. Miranda, I would say due to the the urgency of this particular item, if we get an answer, make sure that if the commission needs to take action or whatever, get it on our next meeting so that we can get this finalized.
Yes, sir.
You need to make an account of a public. Thank you, sir.
It's just, it's just something that we need to look at long, long term also. Understand it's at the moment, but we need to look down the road, regularly at doing it, having the meter set up with skate up. That way they're, they're all brought, making it easier as far as being read and not having to go out there and do it individually. So, I mean,
Getting a
Right. Long term has to be taken into consideration on that also. We don't want to spend a million dollars right now and then find out three years down the road, we're spending another million.
Yeah. I think they were, don't rush into it. You know, let's, let's think about it.
But let's not get it off.
Just, we need to start getting these well data to the state because
I'm working.
Yes. It's affecting us.
Any further questions? All right. This brings us to our public comment time. We invite you to, if you have something to address the commission, come to the podium. Please state your name. If not, you probably be stopped just to make you aware that you need to do that. I see mine coming this way.
Mayor Commissioners, I have just two brief announcements.
You just missed my whole
The first one, we will have a special ceremony. I can't release quite yet what it is. It will be on October the third. That is Tuesday, six P M. next week. It is very, very, very important that I have all the commissions present. I will be releasing the actual statement on Thursday, but I have to keep it quiet until then. But please, please mark your calendar. And then the second thing is we will be hosting an off the clock connections workshop. We will be bringing OSHA back down and they are going to be focusing on pulling gas. However, he will have additional updates necessary, like new policy kind of stuff that has been passed for the state. It is open and free to any downtown business and main street sponsor. That includes incoming donations or anything else like that. So that will be at six P M. on Thursday, October the fifth. And Thursday is at Town Hall, Lee County Town, Lee County Museum Town Hall. And then Tuesdays is at the Lee Theater.
Time on Lee Theater?
Six P M. You guys have any questions?
Thank you. Anyone else? Seeing no one jumped up.
Okay, that could possibly be a quorum.
I'm
Do a public announcement.
I won't be here, so I don't want to make that.
I mean, it does, it's one term to advertise it as such.
Right. I see Shannon writing that down. All right, moving on to our non-H M Os. Mr. Gallow. Okay, it's your time.
Great. Mayor Commissioner, thank you so much. Good evening. With me today is Joseph Hughes, our owner consultant technical advisor. We also have Commissioner Dean Jackson, District One Chair, and then members of our community engagement staff, Sandy Greedo, the Community Engagement Manager, and Christine Will Hoyt, our Community Engagement Specialist. Really appreciate giving this guy a tune to give this two hour long presentation. This is gonna be the historic courthouse renovation feasibility study. So we wanted to, we engaged Joseph's firm to look at the feasibility of renovating the historic courthouse to bring more town employees and offices and departments into that facility. Part of the focal work is project included, you know, what would, what would be involved in doing this? What are all the constraints? What are the obstacles that we would have? So right now, we gave the first presentation to the county commission at their August twenty-fourth board meeting where we presented the feasibility study. The feasibility study is on our website. At that board meeting at August, August twenty-fourth, the county commission said, hey, we need to make sure that the entire community, that's all Lee County, is aware of this study and we need to get your feedback. So with that, we have a number of meetings that we've been, we've scheduled. You see here what we have been doing, right? Today, here we are, September twenty-fifth. We're actually double booked. We're at the Jao Council meeting right now. They're recessing until I get there. I'm joking. So we have some more county staff there right now that are presenting. So you see, this is where we are. We're in the town stadium tomorrow. Somebody would like to have a repeat of today's suggestions and join us in town tomorrow. Commissioner, for the Sunday discussion dialogue at the September twenty eighth meeting, they're not scheduled to make, to take any action. We're gonna report back to the board members on the input, the comments, the suggestions and the ideas that we've received from these various meetings and from emails, phone calls and social media. Today, it's kind of a threefold item. We're gonna provide the board with an update on where we are on the courthouse remodel. That's namely the feasibility study. That's one. We hope to answer your questions to the best of our ability and then to listen to your ideas and suggestions. And we're gonna report back to the county commission. I have nine twenty-six on there. That's the date that we had asked the public to submit their ideas, their suggestions. They can do so at lee county, at lee county dot net or by going to our, our social media accounts, hourly county. So a few immediate items of interest that folks might have a question about or might have an immediate item of interest. The county will be at Lovington, right? We're not proposing to change that in any way whatsoever. So with that, the county seat will remain in Lovington, the courthouse, the courthouse function, the elected officers and the county staff will remain in Lovington. We're not considering any type of demolition. I've got some comments. I've read some comments that I buy with the county demo of the historic courthouse. That's not on the table, right? We're gonna be regardless of whatever decision that the board makes, the county commission, whether it's to renovate or to construct a facility, the direction they gave us was be prepared to continuously maintain that facility. No less than what we're doing today. The county courthouse administrative building, again, whatever it looks like in terms of what, what the board decides, that will remain in Lovington. If the new facility is constructed, we have not determined where that new facility would be located. We know it's in Lovington, right? We know that. Where in Lovington, that's to be determined. But with that, the courthouse will not be abandoned. We'll continue to have a number of free community events there. That's been really a crowd pleaser. It's been a great way that we can engage the public. Really proud of our community engagement team. All right, they've really have done a tremendous job of bringing new events to the downtown area and to all of Lee County, right? We have a countywide purpose. We serve countywide and a number of our events, free events that are with holidays at different times of the year. I think have really been spectacular. Recently, we received the Iris Garden Club Award, very proud of that, and a lot of the staff. We're gonna continue to manage the courthouse on there. Uh, we're going to continue to maintain the courthouse on everything, so. Think of a great team, great staff, and we've been doing what we can to really, uh, highlight the courthouse and make use of it, not only on the inside, but on the outside. A number of those free events have been outside and we want to continue to do those, whichever direction the county commission takes. So, there's a couple of different steps here, and I want to let Joseph describe where we are and what that means in relation to all the steps that are involved with the project.
Thanks, Mike. Mayor Commissioners and, and staff, so my office is a, uh, architectural firm. We specialize in building science and architecture technology, basically, um, designed to bring, uh, consultation to the county. Um, one of the first parts of the process that we have been engaged with the county and county staff is the feasibility study. When we go through this process of, when the county goes through the process of determining whether or not they're going to, uh, start a new project for construction or capital improvements, the first thing they have to do is a feasibility study that identifies the pros and cons and, and the capabilities of their, uh, desire, basically have a programming desire to something, in this case is to either, uh, renovate the courthouse and, and move, um, departments from the county into that. So, our first step with this was the feasibility study, we're in a very early phase. This is only just the beginning, so everything we've been looking at is big picture. The, uh, the programmatic requirements to get the county where they need to be to actually engage in construction and building, the building, uh, or constructing the courthouse the way they need to use it. We have to go through the next phase, which is programming analysis. Then there's the procure the design team and contractor, that's the architectural team. Then the design and construction, and then of course we have occupation use of the building. So, we're in the pre-design phase right now, and so this feasibility study was from my office to Lee County staff to basically say, here's what you want to do, here's how we think we can do it, and here's about how much it'll cost. So this is very early on.
Got a sort of recap on, uh, who's responsible for what. This isn't for the city commissioners, but I know that members of the public are listening to this, so this is nodding, this is directed at everyone. Reminder, the Lee County Judicial Complex, um, that houses district, uh, district attorney's office as well as district court. That's a facility that's owned by the county. And we're not looking at moving county offices into that facility, uh, that's one. The second facility, just wanted to mention is the, the Lee County magistrate courthouse, right? This is a facility that the city of Lovington owns, uh, that the city of Lovington operates, and that's for magistrate court. And then you have the historic courthouse, is the historic courthouse no longer has court in it. Uh, that's where we house our county elected officials, except for the sheriff's office. We have our county commission meetings there, P and Z, and our, uh, and most of our administrative county departments. Little bit of history, a little bit of background, nineteen eighteen, this is what our county courthouse and the jail will look like. See here. All right, thank you, David Min. Uh, fast forward a little bit, uh, this takes us to nineteen thirty seven. Uh, you can see there the elevator is under construction, uh, right there, the elevator shaft. Uh, and then you can see down there where the school buses and the detention center on the east side of the courthouse lawn. And that was the way it resembled in the fifties, I think this picture was fifty five or fifty six. And then you have the courthouse as it is today, I think that tree is still looks just like that. Uh, and I, we, we kind of joke about that, this picture's from nineteen seventy nine, but I think, uh, the picture's a great picture. And if you stand at that location and look at the historic courthouse, right, today and compare it against what it looked like in nineteen seventy nine, you're going to see a lot of resemblances. I think that speaks to how well the county staff, the elected officials, that take care of the facility. But I did want to highlight, right, you know, the changes in the way in which the facility has evolved. Uh, and again, I want to thank David Min for taking these pictures and sharing with us. Uh, so one of the ways in which the county departments and facilities evolve was the jail and the detention center. Right, so we saw that the detention center, it used to be called the county jail, uh, was housed actually at the courthouse lawn. Uh, that was there up until about the fifties, up until fifty eight, fifty eight, they moved to the fourth floor and the third floor of the historic courthouse. They were there in about the early eighties, uh, eighty four, eighty four is when the, uh, sheriff's office and detention center opened up. You can see that there on the corner of the screen, uh, that building's been torn down, right? Everyone knows that. So that, that was the county detention center and the sheriff's office. We got twenty years of useful life out of that building, right? And so we opened up the Lee County Detention Center that opened up in oh four oh five. I want to emphasize, point out, uh, the detention center that was built in the eighties, again, twenty years of useful life. Just wanted to emphasize that what that shows is how our population has grown. I think that's just an important factor to consider. So we have the detention center to this today, and then the Lee County Sheriff's Office that opened up in twenty twelve. That's by the detention center. Um, nice grown aerial photo of the historic courthouse as it is today, this is from twenty nineteen. And then we have the judicial complex across the street there, sharing, uh, that parking lot. But the number of ways in which this facility ha- has evolved, uh, it used to be, right, the D A, district court, all those functions, the detention center, the sheriff's office, every county office and apartment used to be housed in the, uh, old detention, what used to be housed in the historic courthouse. And what we've seen, right, based upon the, our population has increased. We've seen that different county departments and offices are no longer be able, are, are able to be in there. So we've had to add, add some rooftops and square footage. Joseph, so I'll get into a little bit more of the feasibility study.
So as I mentioned, you know, in terms of the feasibility study, part of the first steps that we need to do is look at, number one, what are we working with? So I toured the, uh, existing courthouse a, a month or two ago with staff, we kind of went through from the basement and up to the, uh, upper levels, kind of took a look, kind of an initial blush of what this building looks like. Um, the determination, obviously, it's got good bones, it's in very good condition. A lot of the fixtures and equipment in there are obviously museum, uh, ready, they're well maintained, they're in great shape, but they're very antiquated. So, one of the things we have to look at in terms of feasibility is what's it going to take to renovate and remodel this building? How much do we know, or do we need to, uh, understand this building to know if we have to build it all the way through current, uh, model building codes? Or can we actually get away with just doing some basic renovation of some of the fixtures, equipment, and systems? One of the first things that we have to do with this is we have to identify the current building codes. This is the existing building code state of New Mexico as it's adopted by, uh, county municipal and state, uh, governments. The first thing with the existing building code is we have to look at the degree to which we want to renovate an existing building. So, the existing building code says there are three levels. We have to look at level one, level two, or level three. So, this is kind of an important element because this really starts to define the programming of what we need to do to renovate the existing courthouse. And to what extent the county needs to go through to actually do that renovation. So, level one, uh, according to the existing building code is basically do some minor changes to carpet, interior finishes, but not really change the basic layout or structure of the building. So with that level one, it's a very minimal invasive process. We don't have to bring the majority of the building up to code, we don't have to modify the systems to meet current, uh, uh, building life safety codes and, uh, health codes. So then we go into level two because one of the things that, uh, I was instructed from county staff in terms of information provided initially from early programming studies is that there's a lot of program space that needs to move into this building. And the, uh, amount of program space is going to occupy the complete bulk of that building. So in order to meet those, uh, program spaces, by program spaces, I mean, we, we go department by department, uh, from the county, how they want to move these, uh, people and their services into this building. They have needs, they have a certain amount of space, they need for desk, computer space, um, walk-in, public access space, private personal workspace, storage space, so there's all these different types of spaces. So understanding the extent to which we know that we need to renovate this courthouse to, uh, accommodate the needs of the new services and, and of these departments. We know that we're going to be modifying more than just carpet and, uh, finishes, we need to move some walls around. We need, we're actually changing the occupancy, uh, use of some of these floors, which means that we're actually increasing the occupant, but in some areas decreasing others. So we know we're affecting more of the building than just basic finishes. That takes us to a level two for our existing building code. So one of the things we have to look at with that is the code explicitly states fifty percent of the building area is not being modified. And by that, I mean, systems, not just a floor, carpet, and finishes. But we're, we're either going to modify fifty percent of the courthouse by moving walls, change out the electrical switch here, bring in new electrical, bring in new plumbing and services to actually accommodate the needs for the, uh, the building to, to basically be able to perform its intended function. We know that we're above fifty percent, that's part of the programming requirements, we're starting right off the bat. So we already know that we have to, uh, go to a level three, and in the level three, that type of alteration in the existing building code, we now know that we're going to be modifying more than fifty percent and that we're going to have to bring the building up to current codes. So that's going to be life safety, security, and health codes that all are part of the, uh, existing, um, building codes as adopted by state of New Mexico and the, the county. Um, so that was the first step. So we know we're getting into existing building codes, and we know we're, we're modifying the building quite extensively. So then, to what extent? The next step with the feasibility study is we went through the existing building using existing floor plans and a survey of where all the existing building equipment and, uh, service components are not, not space that you can occupy with desks, the space that needs to function for the building, to have a slice on, to have plumbing, and to be able to meet the needs of, of people moving down through it. So my office took the basic floor plan dimensions from existing building documents, we put this into a computer aided design software, and we analyzed the existing floor plates, or each floor level of the building. And we compared to how much usable space, which is the amount of space that's not being occupied by building services. We compared that to the nonusable space, which is basically occupied by things that need to make the building function. So, the, the difference in the colors here on these diagrams are, the magenta or purple is basically nonusable space that we can't assign to, uh, county purposes occupied with space. So we tallied all those up, we put together the nonusable, and we kind of determined what our usable gross work footage is going to be. Um, then the next step was, we had a certain amount of programming information that was collected by the county in two thousand seventeen by a local architect and, and P S R architects in Hops. And so we took that data that was provided from them in terms of what the county needs for the departments at the time that they were going to allocate into the, the courthouse. We took that square footage, which was, um, tallied with not just the amount of space that the county needs to put computers and desks, but also we have to have circulation aisles, we have to have bathrooms, we have to have vertical circulation. So we, we tallied all that stuff together, and then we advised the county that, based on census data, Lee County is the fastest growing county in the state of New Mexico and has been for decades, but the last census count was thirteen percent higher, uh, or thirteen percent growth over the, uh, two thousand ten to two thousand twenty period. Basically, what that means is there, as, as the community grows, the county's services need to grow in conjunction with that. And we can potentially use that as a resource to reject outward. We know since nineteen eighties, the county's been growing. So we also know that if we do new construction, we do a construction project where we're doing new remodel renovation work that meets the needs of the current programming for the county, we have got to also meet future needs of the county, so we put in a growth factor. So, we tallied out all the requirements that we knew we needed, we added that growth factor, and then we added the circulation space. So once we added all those things up, we come to a total gross, uh, or net square footage of area of the building of construction that we know the county needs to be able to use to make these functions. And at that point, we advise the county that, um, there's a difference between what the net square footage that they can use in the, in the current courthouse versus the programmatic needs of the desire, the basis of design. So, then we go on to the next step. Uh, renovation, we, we understand that we've got to renovate the building now per a level three existing building code. That means that we have to bring public access, uh, universal accessibility up to current, uh, meet current codes and standards, which means now we've got to bring in, um, uh, the public from the ground floor level, bring them up to each floor and allow that, uh, to be accessed for every single program requirement, uh, that the county is going to put in this building. We also understand that based on some of the existing conditions of this building and historic maintenance and facility, uh, uh, management, the existing building was designed a long time ago with a certain type of construction. The construction is fantastic, it's a solid concrete building, solid columns, solid, solid site cast concrete floor place, it's a very rigid building. To save space, the original architects in, integrated the plumbing systems with the structural columns. So one of the things that we're now understanding we're going to have to do is retrofit all the existing sanitary sewer because it's all been encased within the concrete columns of the structure. So, as we start to get into this, we know that we've got a new boiler, uh, or requirements. We have new, uh, cooling tower because of the way the, uh, cooling and heating systems are, they're high. We've got all these systems that we're now going to have to include as part of the renovation of the existing courthouse. So we went through that requirements, all those requirements of what a floor, or sorry, a code upgrade is going to, um, be required for the county. Um, with that, we took some of the information from the, uh, uh, a lot of data that's been acquired since the nineteen fifties, and a lot of the data that we use locally came from UNAM Office of Planning Space Management for Building Efficiency Guidelines and the Mexico General Services Department Property Control Division. There are huge, voluminous manuals that kind of explain to an architect designer how to project the intended usefulness of a space, how much area you're going to need to dedicate to the people themselves and to the circulation and to the, uh, service components of the people that it's serving. So we added up all this information, we took out all the data from these two entities and several others, and we put that together to kind of help, uh, advise the county in terms of programmatic requirements. And the programmatic requirements that are combined from that two thousand seventeen architectural program study by the local architect, combined with our evaluation of programmatic needs, including public life safety and health needs, and those have changed actually in the last thirty years, of course, uh, from nine eleven all the way up to recently with the code, uh, the, the pandemic. We know that the codes have changed to modify health and safety standards. We now have to bring our building up to meet those, uh, health and safety standards. So we added, uh, loading to each of those floor plates to devise that. Mike, uh, did you have something you wanted to add on the programming? Because that programming was sent in two thousand seventeen, uh, it was pre-COVID era, it was actually a preliminary design, uh, or not preliminary design, but survey of existing, uh, needs. And so our next step that I'm working with staff, uh, currently and through my office is to actually, um, develop an updated program. We're actually surveying all the district departments and identifying what those needs are to serve the people. And part of that is what Mike is dealing with in terms of who's going to use them.
Mike, before you go forward, just a last question. Having been from this area, I know that we all, we're traveling around in West Texas, Central Texas, Southeastern to Central New Mexico, driving through a town, which you may, maybe have never been through before. And in the center of town, there's an archi, a large architect, architectural building, quite different from surrounding buildings, um, on a square, you know? So, you, my immediate first thought is this is the county seat of whatever county it happened to be. What, mm, in today's terms makes a county seat? Because when you drive past this building, you go, there's the courthouse and, uh, you know, that is the county seat, uh, building. This is no longer a courthouse. It's a generic term that we've thrown at whatever. What makes this a county seat? What ma, what is the official definition? I don't know, I, having grown up here, I've never encountered that question.
So, uh, Mayor Commissioners, essentially it's established by state law. So state law establishes that Lovington's the county seat, and with that, the majority of the elected, the county's elected officials are supposed to be office out of the county seat. So if you, if you look at, you know, other county departments, I mean, there's nothing that necessarily says that certain county departments have to be in the county seat, right? That's been in practice. So if you look at what offices and departments are here in Lee County, you have the management kind of in the administrative offices and departments, right? That, I think makes a lot of sense. Uh, so mainly state law, and then to implement that or to follow that, it's going to be. And then to implement that or to follow that, it's going to be where the county elected officials office and where the county commission holds their meetings. And, you know, where the day to day decisions are made, uh, to operate the county. I would think that was a, a whole holistic definition of the county. What makes, what is the county seat? And if you look at, for instance, then like, you know, state wall says actually like what, uh, where counties, what departments or offices have to be funded out of their general fund? And, and those are the assessor, the clerk, the treasurer, the SO. All right. Those are sort of the primary departments. And then you have the same thing with the commissioners, what they do, it's general fund. So you're going to have more of your general fund offices and departments housed in the county seat. The event center, airports, those are, uh, elective items. You know, you don't have to use general fund now others to fund those. So as Joseph talked and if I talked earlier in terms of this kind of interesting segue into the slide, we, we're sitting at four hundred and sixteen employees right now. That's what we get budgeted. Uh, eighty-three of those employees work out of the historic courthouse. About a hundred and thirty-eight office will work out of the city of Hobbs. And you can see where the rest are. I bring this up just to emphasize that, um, you know, the county, we, the population has grown and, uh, the county's positions have grown. I think, uh, incremental increases, uh, with the population. So I also want to emphasize that the courthouse is not a courthouse. Thank you, mayor, for stealing my other one say.
Sorry.
That's okay. Uh, that's one. Um, second, remind everybody that not all county operations, functions and apartments or offices actually are in the historic courthouse, uh, namely the sheriff's office and detention or district court or D A was that, and they used to be in the historic courthouse. You know, what we're doing here and the reason why I'm here tonight and Joseph is here tonight, we know that the, the historic courthouse and what it means to Lee County, you know, it means a lot. And we know that means even more so to City of Lovington. Lovington residents and, and, and what, you know, what, what impact, the huge impact that it has. Uh, and I believe that the county, we've been in the city and the other organizations such as the Chamber of Commerce in Lovington Main Street, uh, and work and EDC have worked well together to bring events and to have activity in the downtown area. Uh, and, and I believe that whatever the decision is that the commission wants to make, whether it's build new or remodel, I don't see any of that changing. Uh, what I do see the opportunity for is, or what we would like to do is to break some of our county staff from Hobbs up here. There's an honest question, a lot of questions, how many? You know, right now we're looking at, we're even about twenty-five individuals what we're kind of looking at. The big thing, you know, is that not only do you bring those offices and apartments up to Lovington, but as those departments and offices grow, right? Because we know they will. Those departments will be growing here in Lovington and not growing in Hobbs, right? And, you know, that's kind of what you see. You see that both of our employees are actually in Hobbs. You know, that's, that's, that's what it is. It would be nice to bring more of them up here. But to do that the correct way, I've just got to find space, space for that to work. And that's either in a remodel or it's in a new facility or it's a combination of the two. This is a big decision. I know managers and mayors and commissioners across the country who'd never get to be involved with constructing a new administration building or courthouse or anything. It's, it's, it's a legacy project and it's really a huge community project. And, and that's why we're taking the time. We started this process back in twenty seventeen. We had a little delay that was outside of our control, right? But with that, it's, it's a big decision and everyone's, everyone's input and ideas are valued equally. And what is going to make with that though? Input and ideas to be valued equally, we have to make sure that everyone has the same information. The information we're all giving you is the same information that we give to the county commission. So we can see how our roster at the county has changed from nineteen eighty-four to twenty twenty-three and where our employees are located. We're going to, Joseph's going to talk a little bit about Tetris.
With my beginning, I'm not very good at the Tetris side of it. But in terms of preliminary building and planning and, and understanding the use of the existing courthouse, we took the floor plate study that I showed you earlier where we have the usable versus nonusable. And, uh, the next step after that was basically start taking the county departmental needs, adding those four, uh, plate multiplier, multipliers that allow us to have circulation, break rooms, share common workspaces, public safety, we have to have security entrance and, and exit. We have to have all the different components that meet the model, uh, uh, building codes, the energy codes and public safety. So we started putting all that together and programming and pre-programming because keep in mind, we're, we're at a very preliminary stage. I am not the licensed architect who's assigned to actually start doing the design of this. I'm a technical consultant. And so what I'm helping county staff do is advise them and guide them through towards getting an architect and a contractor on board to actually do the renovation of the existing courthouse. So the next step that we have to do is go through and look at what are the usable spaces that we know we need to, um, have dedicated to services that function for the building. So we laid all this stuff out, uh, in terms of a colored diagram and each one of the outlined floor plates are all to scale. So within that, we know that we needed, uh, let's say the blue one, the circulation horizontal and vertical access. We've got to have fire egress, emergency egress for everyone from the upper floor and the basement all to get out to the ground level and go out to the public right of way for safety. So we also know that current codes require that there's a certain number of inches per person, per occupant in order to get everybody out to that, uh, public right of way for safety. Those are not the same requirements that they have when they build the building with their more narrow stairways. So with that, we now understand that that blue circulation horizontal and vertical, we understand we need approximately seven thousand two hundred square feet. Um, so the, uh, the blue areas basically identify for each floor plate what we need to be able to meet those requirements. That is taken out of our actual usable space that we need to be able to occupy for, for people and the services for the program. So at the end of the day, what I brought to the table for the county's awareness and knowledge was that if you look at that Simon Pink Square, which is again at the same scale as all the rest of them, we're at a deficit for what the county in terms of meeting the intentions that they want for their basis of design, we're a short wall of square footage. So the, the next task that is assigned to me is to, and my office, is to inform county staff, what are the options? Because obviously if you can't get everybody into the building that you need to, what are the options to move forward? And of course, part of this preliminary design is the county doesn't have a specific budget assigned to this because they don't know how much it's going to cost. So my task in my office was to start putting together some assignments to identify what this is programmatically going to look at, look like for the county. So the county basically had instructed kind of a basis of design of saying, we want as much of a one stop shop kind of program requirement for, uh, the county services. So what that means as we interpret this, and this is actually very common of Burn Leo County and Albuquerque has done this recently, Saturday is working on doing this, is basically bringing all these services that, uh, any person in, within the county would need to access within one area. So they just go to that one building instead of driving all over. Mike alluded to a couple of times the idea of like just getting your building permit if you're trying to develop land. Instead of going to all these different locations on different days and driving around or making appointments, you're actually able to go to the main central area and get this work done. This is, uh, becoming, uh, very important for a lot of municipalities and jurisdictions all over the country. So that was the basis of the design that there's the county's need or desire. So then I said from, uh, our analysis, my, my goal is to inform the county. We have two options. We can assign some of the program spaces, uh, that the county needs to meet into the courthouse. And they're going to have to decide which ones go in there, but we can't fit everything in there. So now we need an option number two. Um, so you either put everything you can in there and then have these outlined departments that need to be housed somewhere else and that'll be taken, uh, into consideration at a later time. Or you can keep the existing courthouse and do an adaptive reuse for other purposes. And then relocate all of the county's, uh, basic, uh, basis of design program requirements into a one building that's new construction. So obviously the next thing that I have to do is the county says, well, what are the implications of either of these two options? We have to look at costs because obviously that's the biggest implication for, uh, uh, second to the, the program part. So we looked at what I have to in, inform the county is that for a governmental building, our goal and objective just generally socially in architecture has always been we want a fifty year life expectancy for that building ideal. And what that means is the county is going to be able to invest their initial upfront costs and get fifty years of service out of that. So with that, we have to have a higher end building with good, uh, interior fit and finish. So there are several standards in real estate development and architectural programming work American that identify what these fast vacations, just like the building code. So we know we want a class A building. If you go to, uh, uh, most municipalities, all of their buildings are going to be class A buildings, fit and finish is going to be durable materials. So we've got things that can be easily maintained over time, um, that are impact resistant. So things as you're moving parts and dollies and, and furniture fixtures in and out of, it's not mingling up the walls and we have to go back and do a, a service repair on those. So those are the items that we looked at in terms of cost. And so then I, I did a comparison for the county between if we renovated the existing building and if we do a new construction, what are the cost comparison between the two? So we took the, the basic square footage that we knew we had to use with the courthouse and we assigned a cost value that's based on a lot of data that we get from all over the place. One of them is the national database that narrows down, uh, specific cost data to a region. Um, so in this case, the southwest region and more specifically, uh, the New Mexico, Texas region. Then we also, my office looked at precedent analysis because when you're doing a remodel like an existing courthouse like this, there's a lot you have to take into consideration that are unknown variables. And so one of the things we looked at was comparing, seeing if there's anywhere recently within the last five years, uh, of the Midwest or Southwest region, we've got a building, a governmental building that was renovated, remodeled, similar to the existing, uh, historic courthouse. And what was the cost? So we found one in the Midwest. It was, uh, completed in twenty twenty-two, uh, two thousand twenty-two. And the, uh, cost for that basically was, uh, an overrun cost. So they had their original budget of about five hundred and fifty dollars square foot. The cost overrun because of unknown conditions for trying to renovate the existing concrete structure of that building, about the same size, uh, square footage was one thousand ninety-two dollars a square foot. So my office took that as a sort of regionally specific precedent that we could use as that's what we think is going to be our higher end cap to remodel the courthouse. Then we've got all the, uh, kind of general estimated costs that come from the data from historic data all over the United States. And we narrow that down to our lower end, we think about, uh, eight hundred and forty dollars a square foot to renovate the existing courthouse. So for comparison, we take that data and we do an apples to apples with new construction. And as you know, construction's been absolutely volatile. The construction market is crazy, has been the last five years. But two thousand twenty-two has settled down a little bit. So we have some fairly reasonable cost data for actual buildings built in, in New Mexico and, um, uh, some of which were actually built right here, including the, uh, the Lee County judicial complex. So we took that cost data and we kind of ran that through what it costs for new construction of a single story, uh, building that met the square footage of the county. So our range of that was two hundred and ninety-eight dollars at the low end to about four hundred and eighty-one dollars per square foot on the height. So this is our apples to apples comparison. But then we kind of did another one, which is in the middle. We know that the existing courthouse is a mid-rise multi-floor building. So instead of comparing just flat, uh, no vertical circulation building, uh, square footage cost to the multi-story renovation, we also looked at a mid-rise building. So we did that cost evaluation for mid-rise and mid-rise is basically about five to six, uh, floors. So four hundred and eighty-one to six hundred and seven dollars a square foot. So the end result was, when I come back to the county after doing a derivative, iterative cost evaluation for these buildings, we're looking at those numbers I gave you for renovation of the existing, uh, historic courthouse, which were eight hundred and forty to one thousand ninety-two dollars a square foot. Um, we add soft costs. So soft costs obviously are going to be the cost to retain services of design professional. Um, you know, the contractors overhead and profit, building permits, that kind of thing. We have various receipts tax, uh, contingency for unknowns, which by the way, four percent for a, uh, remodel is actually kind of low. But we're hoping by the time we get into this that we're going to really know the courthouse very well to where we can count on that four percent contingency of unknown conditions. And then we ran that through the numbers. So we come up with about sixty-nine million to eighty-nine million dollars for renovation. So the same comparison, we look at what's the new building cost to meet the same programmatic needs. So we run that through with all the same soft costs, contingency, that type of thing. But of course this excludes, uh, cost of land acquisition. Um, so basically if we just took the building similar to the existing courthouse, we have the land. We just built a new building for lunch. We would come up with about, uh, thirty million to forty-eight million. So that range was what I bring to the county with the information in terms of fact finding. Here's the general estimates of, uh, probable cost that you could expect if we do a renovation versus a remodel. And so that's what the county needs to be able to have the data to be able to use to make a decision moving forward.
I think this is an important slide, not to emphasize that eighty-nine million is a lot of money or that twenty-nine million is a whole lot less. Not putting a value with this. For instance, we're not saying that eighty-nine million dollars, that's too much. You, you don't see this on the slot. We're describing what we anticipate the cost to be. That whether it's too much or it's perfectly acceptable, that really you all. And that, that's members of the community. And that is that what do you value most? Is the most valuable thing maintaining that historic building and having county offices there eight to five Mondays a Friday? If, if that's the most valuable thing, then eighty-nine dollars, that, that's, it is what it is. We're going to figure out how to make it work. If the most valuable thing is, well, you know, when I go and buy something or when I do something, I always go for the option that costs the most. I go for the option that, you know, something I can afford and I still have money left over for something else. I don't know. This is a value, it's a value call. For some individuals that I've heard, it's, it doesn't matter how much it costs. The county has the money. You guys remodel it, we could have done. That's, that's a value call. Some folks say, well, wait a minute, you're the stewards of the public dollars. And as such, you should try and do it at a cost that's less, right? And still, it still performs the way you want it to be. But this isn't my call. It's not Joseph's call. It's not the staff's call. It's a, it's a value call. And, and, and that's really why we're here is to, to listen to your concerns, ideas and to answer your questions. So if your ideas are, hey, you guys can afford it, go do it. You know, that's what I want to report back to my board, knowing that we're still going to figure something else out in the future. You know, the county commission does not have a predetermined location on where they would construct the facility. This is just a feasibility study on, can we do it in this building? And if so, what are we looking at, right? That's, that's what we're doing right now. And if the board chooses to, uh, look at new construction, then we're going to have a whole other discussion on where that, where that should go. We know it's in Lovington. That's the county seat. Um, but that's really what this is. And, 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 and your ideas and your questions and your concerns and your suggestions are, are, are really what we're after today and, and what we've been after. So we can share that with the commissioners. So that, that is our presentation. If you have any questions or anything else that you all have.
Okay, before, before we, we're going to play the table a little bit. Okay, first thing I'm going to do, I'm opening it up to the commissioners and staff. And then I'll open it up to the public, uh, after that. Sure. That everybody kind of has time to ask their question. Mission again.
So can you go back to the previous slide? I just, I want to clarify, no, that one right there. Yes, yes, sir. So I, I just want to understand a few things here. So when you're talking about eighty-five thousand square foot building, that would be like, so don't yell at me yet. Um, so that, that's eliminating the old building and moving everything from the old building into the eighty-five thousand square foot facility that allows for growth. Correct?
Plus three and folks up that.
Right, right. So growth and expansion and transfer and everything that's leaving that building. Basically we're moving everything over.
That's what that's.
So and, and I mean, So and and I mean. Honestly, ninety million is very cost prohibitive in my thought my thought process. Um you know, maybe it's not, but I mean, that's a large chunk of money and I mean, just about everybody and. There's only a few businesses in here that would even. You know, not even flinch at that, but the majority of us in here, ninety is a large number. But what I'm getting at is, so. If you're basically thinking of building a a facility, a new facility is fifty year plan that or fifty year. Building that you could house everyone in and you eliminate the older building because of. Cost of operation and different things like that. What are we actually going to do with the building? Or are you going to build a smaller building of, let's say, um because you already have sixty nine thousand, but you have. Sore amount of money to. To rectify issues because of of new requirements and our stuff. How do you manage those two to make it feasible where you're still using some of the old building and yet still, you know, that's.
Yep, I'm going to go back a couple of slides. To I think help answer some of that. So right now, the building is about sixty eight thousand square feet, it's full square footage. Uh we need a volume right now about seventy two thousand square feet for today's today, right now, not accounting for any type of growth. Right. When you factor in that, so we get to that eighty more than eight thousand square feet. You know, so we we haven't discussed right now or we didn't ask Joseph to look at, you know, three options. It was just the feasibility of remodel. Um I think if the board wanted to, uh county commission board selected to build a new facility. I think we're looking at probably something around a tier one improvement, a level one, excuse me, a level one. Types of improvements where it could be community meeting space, well, it could be, I I'm not sure right now. Now again, that would be something that I think the board would want to go back to the community and say, hey. We got this facility. We got, I forget what the usable square footage is. We got, you know, fifty eight thousand square feet here. We we don't want to have to take out the elevator shaft. So that's one of the things we want to do. If we remodel this the building by more than fifty percent, we're going to remove the elevator shaft. We're going to have to. Put in um stairwells from the fourth floor to the first floor. Because right now we don't have the ability to go from the fourth floor all the way to the first floor in a, you know, consecutive stairwell. We don't have that. So that's when so when we're looking at then. So I think when we look at Mayor Commissioner Gandy, probably the level one type of deal. And and what that uses, I don't know, we, there's a number of different uh ideas out there, but. Right now, I I think that would be another community um idea that would toss around some ideas about, you know. Um having more community functions there that not only use the outer space, but some indoor space as well. And that that's that's part of our discussion.
So I have one more question. So I I know this is the third spot from the last judicial complex. Yeah. So I I know uh. Placement in the community is going to be the the war saddle that, you know, we die by unfortunately. You know, because I've already heard um through uh horrible channels we have out there, you know, about placement of where this facility may go. You know, I have my own that I commented if it was to go there, I would never make the front page, but um. So you know, that that that's going to be the the dying spot for Lovington because, you know, like you say, we already have the the old courthouse. We have the new judicial complex downtown. You know, we have our main street district that's using those different things. And if you were to move that from that area, you know, I mean, it's. Because we're all creatures of habit, you know, so that I think that's bigger concern than the feasibility study as far as a majority of citizens. Or let me just say myself, I won't even I won't even blame the citizens for this one for myself. I mean, that would be the the major concern is where the placement is, you know, because my concern would be is. Like you said, you have a eighty six people, you're going to bring in a hundred people. That's a hundred people that they or may not eat downtown. It's fifteen to twenty more minutes than having to come down and. Pardon me for, you know, struggle with different things like that as if you were to move it outside from the downtown area, which we're struggling to keep alive anyway. So. That I think that would be the the bigger issue for for me than any anything else. You know, whatever you got to do as a county, I I understand that that growth pattern and and different things like that. I mean, that's a lot of money and best of luck using it. So. Um but yeah, no, I I get it. But you know, the the where you planted at, that's probably going to be the one where I park the bus. Do you give you have a preference? I, you know, I do unfortunately, you know, because we already uh. But so. Typically kind of tinkle around some of that, some comments from previous commissioners and different things like that. We've been fighting to fight to secure property in that same general area. You know, I would like to see that, but you know, that may not, again, that may not be a feasible task that that does that brings up other different things and different things like that. So. That was just what I'm leaning towards.
I'll just.
Go ahead.
Since since uh Commissioner Gandy hit that that spot, I'll I'll echo what he had said. It's location. And to me, it's all it's location and. In good big business practices, you would build a new facility, even though it hurts, you know, uh. Sometimes it can hurt little or sting a little pride within the community. But the longevity, it's like fifty years. I know I'm not going to be here and as a as a steward of the community as well. Should I shouldn't be pushing something that I know that the future generation can affect and and a and a cost, a a a cost. And uh because oil and gas, I mean, it's great. We've had some good good years, but. I mean, some of us that grew up here in the eighties when everything was being sold downtown for less than ten or twenty thousand dollars. You never know, maybe that day might come back and 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 we're. And we're and we have a facility that we're going to have money into. There is no money. So uh. You know, I but may. As Commissioner Gandy said, location, it's both in my heart just to keep it down the downtown here. I think uh Lovington, the the previous board. Uh chose to keep the magistrate court where it's located at to enhance downtown. To continue to the growth of downtown area and I'd certainly like to see uh they're renovating the old courthouse or new facility in the downtown area, but not move it outside the. The at the sheriff's area, at the jail area, I think, right? There is just a nice area and I think the more we put into it. Uh I mean, it it'll look like like a. An art that that no one else has without within the state and also within in in Texas for a community of twelve thousand. I mean. These are monster buildings for twelve for a population of twelve thousand. You wouldn't imagine seeing that in any other uh other community other than this and. So I echo uh Commissioner Gandy said downtown location, location is uh. I strongly believe it needs to stay downtown. That's that's but always going to be my answer.
So 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 this is how many which I captured by Mayor Commissioner Andy, uh mission for heal. So as long as, so your comments are, you see the cost, you see the value to the community. Um new facility, okay, with that provided is downtown.
Yes. Uh yeah, I mean, good business practice. We're not going to say throw 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 away thirty forty million dollars and then and then. Ten years from now, we're having to pump another twenty million in because it's not feasible. I think I can as bad as. I mean, I'm just saying that. We've all lived here. We've all loved the courthouse, but I did best business practices would be to. I hate, you know, even though you hate to say it, but I I mean, you've got to say it is that. Uh I wouldn't budget like that at my house, you know what I mean? I'm gonna and and I told the city manager that, but. You've got to live within your means and and e- even at the local city level as well as the county. You've got to uh live within your means. You can't be dreaming of other dreams that are not feasible, you know, for the long term.
So someone other quick comment, you know, the judicial complex. I play first or two as to buy a big fancy fire truck that's got a ladder on it because it's multi stories. Why I keep another multi store building close to the ladder truck? Well, it's almost a fire hydrant. It's a working.
Mr. Stav, anybody else have your observation? Oh, absolutely.
Yes, uh I don't really care to speak much, but I've been asked to speak by numerous businesses. It would be a disservice if I didn't be the city commissioner, be district two. Majority of the businesses that came to talk to me are in district two. I've had businesses outside of district two come and talk to me also. One word I have to say is hard. And hard is the courthouse. It's the heart of the community. And don't get me wrong, I appreciate everything. Commissioner Jackson. City manager, county manager, Mike. But they feel and I do too, and would be uh. Detrimental to the uh businesses here. In Main Street area. The businesses, the community, uh it would be uh. It would be good. Also, I understand it's in it's in its infancy here, you know. Be looking forward to seeing a feasible study, maybe even an economic impact study, how it's going to affect the businesses. I understand that's something that the city would be responsible for is that doesn't concern me. But I wish that I hope that it does concern the businesses that are here. Because it affects everybody. It affects our G R T. It affects everything. I was at the meeting the other night. I'd like to know what we're going to propose here because what I heard is. Basketball courts, we're going to make the courtroom courthouse, I don't know, or ballrooms. The only thing that I heard is that you guys are committed to cutting along over there. So I'd like to see what's going to happen, you know, as far as a budget. Uh if you're moving. What are we looking to do? I understand there's a lot of things to be thought about, but we're just starting this. As far as my as far as my feeling. I'd like to see the courthouse renovated. And I know the businesses in the community would do. Again, I think thank you guys for everything that you've helped the city out with. Really appreciate it. But to me, the one word is hard. That's the heart of the community.
Any other question?
No, and I think I think the thing about it, Mike, was just that they just want to see it abandoned and also cobwebs are in there and. And I think that's really what everybody's supposed to about. Uh and and you saw, I see that in Roswell. I mean, Roswell has a smaller. It has the old courthouse and they obviously has a bunch of observatories around it because it was no longer feasible for them because their city grew so big. You walk in, I think there's going to be one courtroom and the rest is all fair. And uh uh I think I think about that when I when I think about this idea and I think. Be nice to have some some, because I know even if even if you built another facility. Growing thirteen percent, let's say we add another thirteen percent, that building could be still utilized for oh for more offices. I don't think it'll ever be abandoned because. You know, because of the growth that there if we continue to grow, I I. I just don't see it ever being abandoned. But that I think that's what goes in and I I just remember going to the. Theater and seeing them guys up there in the jailhouse screaming at me.
Mayor Commissioner Trillo, I think I'm trying to go back to a slide. I don't want to point this in the ad. So I think um. Point four, I you know, we heard from the board members that they told us and certainly the staff not looking and trying to ban the building. You know, what the use would be if we were to construct a new facility. I I don't know right now. That that would be something that the community would have to decide. Our community would either input on and. I know the commissioners would want to hear the communities that put on that, you know, the same way we're doing it right now. We can see that that's a that's a real concern for us. It's something that we're sensitive to where we're at to abandon the facility. While we did talk about, you know, cutting the grass and maintaining the lawn, we also added a lot of community events that are free. We spend. I don't have the exact budget on that, but um our community events are 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 quite expensive and the advertising that we do and the and and what we provide. It's open to all Lee County residents, but certainly probably a number of Lovington residents take advantage of that as they should, right? It's good. But we have, we do have a lot of those events. I think we have something for every holiday and um. Um and you see a lot of people there and that's something that our board members have been excited about. Um that's something that I know they would they want to continue to, they want to see that continue. So much so that we've added staff in our community engagement department to make that a reality. You know, before it was a couple of us. Before we were saying, we we really want, we want to do more. So we we've added the people to do that. We've added interns to help us do that. Uh we have uh some of our interns from Lovington High School uh that work uh in my department and in community engagement. And um you know, they help us with all these types of events and we're going to continue to do that.
Anyone else here? Okay, I'm going to open it. I'm going to have a remark at the end, but I'll open it up to the public now. So if you uh have a question, uh did you guess?
Mr. Mayor?
Oh, I was going to do that in number three.
Okay.
Because in his order, it was questions and then ideas and whatever, if that's okay.
That's fine.
I hadn't forgotten, promise, promise that. Oh, anyway, uh members of the uh. Audience, if you have a question, I'm not going to ask you to come forward. You can just state some of the where you are. And comments, questions or whatever, this is your time, so. Go ahead.
Thirty seconds for last. All right, thirty seconds.
So um I agree with Scott, the heart of Lovington. Our downtown, our main street, we weren't diligently trying to get businesses in and improving the businesses that are there and. Coming events and. Those courthouse downtown, even if it was just a community, I mean, what's cornerstone to do? You know, if you put it out on Commercial Street, which is one of the locations that people have mentioned, it's. If you're from Hobbs, you're going to drive to the courthouse. Do your business, turn around and go back tops. You're not going to come into downtown Lovington. You're not going to shop. You're not going to buy a cash. You're not going to. None of those things happen. I understand that. I need more online. Because now, you know, you pay your taxes online. So less people maybe coming into the courthouse. Still, we have the growth, which would be nice. More people coming to town. Um the moving the people from Hobbs to Lovington, like the twenty five people. The second floor, the third floor and the basement have two offices. We already have them in the twenty five one people. The courthouse has not been um updated, upgraded out of town since when? I have no idea. Five years I haven't had hot water. Can we not put little water heaters in each bathroom? Can't do that? Even for the bodies, does it individually press sink? No, that's.
We can't. We will be able to do that. So so like what what I mean, we didn't really get into like, I don't get like every issue that's wrong set. So I'll share with you. As Joseph mentioned, our what delivers water to the sink is encapsulated for columns. And the pipes that deliver the hot water to each bathroom. And the pipes that deliver the hot water to each bathroom, we know those pipes are exploding. So in order for us to take and change those pipes out, we have to go into the structural beams where those pipes are to replace them. So we don't want the water to be coming out of the pipes in our structural beams, so we shut that water off. So once we start doing so many upgrades into that facility, particularly each bathroom, once we start putting our hands on each bathroom, then we're gonna break each bathroom up to eighty-eight, and that, we don't have it. And there's this one, it's like, it's not like, it's not like we're gonna fix this thing. One, the way that facility is constructed, you open the box, it's one thing to paint the room, or change the market of the room, or change our desks, and change our desks, and that sort of thing. But once you start changing out the water, or messing with the plumbing, it's, it's a whole other ball.
And there was such a year ago, my, I paid money for the mall for perhaps twenty, twenty-two million? No. I didn't know.
No, so I'll do that, okay.
This county.
Yeah, so we have fifty million budget right now, yeah. We have the grant funding about three point time, we have four, about four million dollar grant funding in the state.
So we have an ICIP provision.
What's that?
Is that my own ICIP provision?
Yeah, so, um, we have our own fund, we have about fifty million budget. And the ICIP, you will only, potentially only put it in those projects that you're wanting to do that. So it is in our ICIP. No, ICIP is an infrastructure capital improvement.
So my idea is keep the courthouse for the public office, the public business, the assessors, clerks, treasurer, the DWI program perhaps, by the way, give the public emergency management, they do the public, and then administrative finance. It's not that, they have a building at the fairgrounds that they built, the house, the county employees, while the courthouse is being remodeled, and it's not being widely used right now. And, you know, it's gonna affect Livingston, more than Hobbs, more than John, more than you. And I'm not against a new annex. We're gonna have to remodel the existing courthouse to a point anyway, because you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to have up to certain.
But I think, I think talking about that point goes back to cost, and it's just fifty percent, so they utilize less than fifty percent of that facility. The cost of not having to go in the direction of bringing it up to code would be a lesser cost, but I don't want them, and I'm against them using the facility at the fairgrounds, because just like your presentation is, I want it all downtown, period. And I think the city has, has adequate area, in the downtown area, to provide that. So there shouldn't be an excuse to move it outside of the area, if they find it easy.
I'm not called people to stay here from district two. I would like to also, Jimmy, I need to know what Commissioner Trillo said earlier. Some of us that are here, younger than you all, that actually chose to come back to Livingston, chose to come back because of the heart and the community and the people that are here. If you look around across the nation, when you talk about these fun towns and all these other cool places, the downtown is a thing where things happen. That includes administration offices, municipality, judicial complex, a lot of variety of different services. Yes, they do sustain our downtown businesses, and have somebody from the younger generation that would like for our courthouse or county to stay there. I would also like to remind everyone, the units in school buildings are also just as old as the courthouse, and have been on the ICIP maintenance recap plans for a long time. Even during my time on the schoolwork myself, we were actually able to renovate and completely redo a lot of our really, really old buildings. For example, Jeff just said, and now it is completely a different building when you walk inside. They have all of this technology needed for fiber, as well as if anything shuts down in terms of major storms, we have actual ruins in there that can contain all of that technology, and be what, out of one generator as well. So I would really appreciate our commission, on behalf of my district specifically, if we could make sure that we keep the county in downtown.
It's doing by, it's been running a lot faster, I would say, than the county employees, a lot more than the county employees. I'm my favorite Griffin on district three. I just want, I wanna raise one concern about the possible renovations, though. It is a historic building that has that charm, obviously, you're not gonna touch the outside or change any of that, but going into it, it sounds like you gotta make a lot of space, and I feel like that's probably gonna have that impact of taking away a little bit of charm eternally, too. If you, you know, you have that great big nice hallway, if you need to cut off some of those hallways for security, and things like that, you're gonna have to line these hallways, the cubicles even. So it almost defeats the purpose of preserving the historic courthouse, which everybody I think here does love, enjoys. So I'm not saying that I'm opposed to renovating it, to using it, but I do think that that's a concern that we haven't really heard of much, and I think it's a reality, plus given the age, there could be personal complications when you go into that level-three construction job that, you know, could, could be a risk of permanently damaging the courthouse as well. So I think we should acknowledge that. The other thing that I would wanna point out, remark about the younger generation here, when the historic courthouse was built in the thirties, you know, it was very cutting-edge, revolutionary for the time, it had an elevator, an escalator. That's kind of why we love it so much, because it was revolutionary for the time, and now, I mean, like, I back, back at it, this historic, kind of, you know, piece in time. And nobody would say it's revolutionary now, but it is historic. And I know, we kind of have an opportunity now to do what they did in the thirties, where we could build a new, cutting-edge facility that is the heart, or a new heart of Livingston. I do agree with a lot of the commissioners and other residents here that it should stay in town. We don't want it out on the hot highway after a bit, or something like that, because you do want the economic activity, as well as the people, and the fun, you know, the lawn, all the activities that you do on there. There's also gonna be a public space of its own that could have activities going on. So the important thing, I do think, is keeping any new facility in town, and it should be, that will be the priority. But I would say again, I do want to think that that's a possible opportunity, if you do it right. Right now, it's very open-ended, and nobody knows kind of what the new facility could be, or where it would be located. And I think that's probably the biggest red flag, so I would like to see that get a little more thought out, and then see what the options might be. Also, you know, like I said, I don't know, I mean, you feel eating it downtown, and I would just say that my, my first preference would be the parking lot, the two share building on top of that, because the parking lot has such a waste of space. If you really feel you need that parking space, you could easily make the first level a parking garage. But right now, it's just a, doing most of the empty parking space.
Thing that is historic building, I mean, my, my thing is, if we save, we'll sort of build the courthouse and build a new one there, with that deed fee. The reason I say that, for a simple fact is, if we have a new facility, then we need every code that's taken. At this point, we're not even basically up to go. Basically, what we're doing, we're patched, we're not fixed. So I would say, if we're gonna invest our money, if we move the old courthouse, it's a historic building, we'll take this many pictures there, and keep it a minute. But let's build up the new facility. Downhill towards that, if we have to make three, four, five stories high to accumulate the piece of land we need, we'll do it. I think it's more, I'd rather invest our money in that, that sort of patch on something that's already broke. But she mentioned, we have no hot running water. I mean, there's a lot of things that we're gonna put money into, and we're still behind the curve. We're still behind the curve. We don't, we're not making an effort to beat up with the curve. Feel that this part of our city lacks, you know, the economic growth, because we're always, let's dispatch it, let's get by. Let's build something new, like you're saying, say that you are building, let it shine. With our, the county seat, let that build and shine. Even if it's like a better building than we in our courthouse, it's beautiful. Nobody has one with us in our county. Why not build the courthouse or our county facility, to, you know, bring in the beauty to the town that we have? We still have enough historic gear, and we can see, we're always patching, and not fixing nothing. Let's get up and say, you know, watch, let's do what it gotta do, we gotta raise our taxes, let's do what it gotta do, let's make it shine. We have the opportunity, we have it down there. We've always struggled, but if, if you don't struggle, you're not gonna make it. We need to stand proud of our county, like everybody says. We didn't do a demolition on it, we have a space, why not build it there? It's gonna stay right there, it's not changing, it's not worn over if we leave. You know, that's my opinion, but we're always patching, we don't fix nothing. We need to fix it, you know, we, you see, all chip in, like you said, we're all committed, stay here and live here, that's what gonna happen. Don't let a guy come in and buy all your property, and they get to do what they want with your property. We need to stand our ground, here's where we live, here's where we come from. You stop and think, how much property is on Main Street? That, that was born in Main Street, own this property, most of them are in downtown. They don't care about the history, let's stand strong and build something new that we can say, we built that for our county. We represent our county. That's not letting somebody take anything what we're gonna do in our hometown, that stands strong and united, that's who we are. Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Can we cut it short, because it's seven-thirty now, calculations, it's gonna be midnight. It's not that I don't care about anybody's comment, I just, if you look at the agenda, we're gonna be here all night, I got somewhere to be here. I don't mind if he has a lot of things to do. He better order now, that's all I got. But I would like to go ahead and move on, I mean, if that's possible.
We're gonna move on to point three. One thing I was gonna say, and I said it the other night, is until we all know, and you, and the county commissioners, and the county basically give us answers to location, the repurpose of the existing facility, however, not gonna lose the attraction of people to come to the downtown, then it's impossible for any of us to say, that's the way I wanna go. When we have all of that, and hopefully then we also have the time to say, hey, we really like that, of course, there's always gonna be, you know, you could've done this, you could've done that. I do not envy your path and journey to get to that point, but we support the county. And with that, I'm gonna move to the third item, which is ideas and whatever, I'd like to have Dr. Carlos, Mr. Miranda, excuse me, or whatever. I was on the fortieth level there, buddy.
Mr. Mayor, first, I'd like to read a letter that I'd like to present to Commissioner Gallagher, County Manager Gallagher, excuse me. The city of Livingston believes that moving up any county offices and employees out of the historic downtown courthouse would have a negative impact on our downtown Livingston area, its shops and businesses, as well as making the area appear desolate and uninvited. It would also be an obvious negative economic impact. In speaking with the various commissioners, I feel comfortable in putting forth a possible option of the county acquiring from the city the parcel of land adjacent to the new judicial complex building, so as to give the county a viable option should it decide it absolutely needs a new office building. As you know, we're in the final stages of acquiring and then demolishing the last remaining structure on this block. Although this block was originally earmarked for a veterans memorial park, the city feels strongly enough that we would look for another location for this park, if it meant keeping county offices and employees in our historic downtown area. I hope this presents you with a solid alternative to any relocation plans that might be being considered. Additionally, the city would be willing to lease to the county the triarist building for up to two years during the renovation and/or relocation process.
Mayor, I think that's really helpful, just given that county did really explore, explore options, I think is very helpful. So, thank you for allowing us to, you know, hear that, that's great, thanks.
Thank you. I'd like to say thank you just to county for bringing this forward and giving the citizens the ability to express their concerns, their ideas, and everything else, because that's what ultimately we're all trying to do. We're a united county, and we wanna continue to do that, we want to be helpful. It's, county helps us, we wanna be, we appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
All right, brings us to our next, non-action item, discussion and utility director position.
Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, in the ten weeks I've been in this seat, it has become very obvious to me that two critical areas that our city needed help in was in the finance and utilities departments. With the addition of Ms. Cooper, I feel we are well on our way towards resolving issues in the finance department, that we have made great progress. In terms of the utilities departments, I've spent a great deal of time and uncovered a great deal of problems, and we are tackling the water filling issue, the water meter issue, the commercial accounts issues, et cetera. Additionally, we have chronic water main breaks in weeks, some of these cannot be avoided. However, I feel that to properly remediate this problem, we need more supervision in the water department. The commission is aware of an issue that came to light just last week involving this department, which was completely avoidable. Therefore, I feel that to reactivate the position of the utilities director would benefit the citizens, because the issues in this department are extremely complex and diverse. To that end, I have noted in the past ten weeks the performance and leadership qualities of our wastewater department head, Mr. Robert Perez. Mr. Perez has led a campaign to clean up and rebuild the wastewater treatment plant, and by all accounts has made great progress. He shows an excellent leadership style and has a can-do attitude. I have been extremely impressed with his performance. I believe that if we were to give Mr. Perez oversight of both departments, and not streets or parks and rec, just those two departments, it would improve and speed up the necessary improvements that are desperately needed in the water department. That is where I need help. I realize some commissioners worried that we would be spreading this Perez too thin, but I believe his mere oversight alone could set the tone without reversing the progress at the wastewater treatment plant. I have been asked if I needed an assistant city manager, and my answer is, if I have a strong finance director and a strong utilities director, it is my belief that this is sufficient for me to manage the city. And Mr. Perez is adheres to answering questions or concerns that the commission might have. Thank you for your consideration.
I don't have no problem. I think, I appreciate you bringing it to the board's attention, I know it's a new position, I know, I know previously we had a public orchestra. And we eliminated that position, we didn't bring it back because of, due to finances. And we've had discussed possibility of, you know, assistant city manager, but mainly to cover some of that area of that, because we like to see you in other areas pushing forward, but. In this, to bring him in line with, let's say, the fire chief or the chief, it would be an extra twenty thousand dollars additional to the salary a year, which could be covered by the extra money that's already coming into the utilities bill, so would not have a real impact on the general. Yeah, and now, I would like to recommend also, if you take a little bit from, if he's gonna be doing two, two episodes, you take a little bit of water revenue, a little bit from wastewater revenue that you receive and divide it in half, right? It's like I mentioned before, even when it becomes parks and recs, some of them guys are also taking care of lawn activities and, and so forth. And I would say you need to cut it, cut that pie a little bit more to involve more personnel, because it's not adequate staff, either or. And I think, probably just making another assessment of it all, other than bringing on a director, maybe Robert, if all goes well tonight, he comes on board, he can make a better assessment than what we could, and what his true needs are. But I know the public's, every time a water line breaks, man, I think they're going to go. But I know the public's, every time a water line breaks, man, I think they're going to go.
Mr. Bo.
Robert, not that you're being thrown into this, but are you up for the job? I'd like to hear from you.
You wanna come to the podium?
And I know you don't like speaking, that's why I had.
You know, I was thinking, it's a challenge. But you know what? It's what's all about. You know, I think I can do it. You know, it's one of those deals. I think the work that I've done at the wastewater proves for itself. I can do it. There's things that will change, I know. But the bottom line is, I think I can do it. If I didn't think I could, I would be. That's why. Any questions or anything?
I think also we had liberty. I mean, if all goes well in your favor tonight, it's what I'm saying in favor of city management. Be at liberty to bring the issues forward. Don't, don't, don't try to please us, is what I'm saying. If we have issues out there, let us know.
No, that's my.
I think that's been our previous mistakes is that some people are feared to bring what's wrong. Just let us know.
I'm not, I'll bring it to you. I'm not gonna hide it under the carpet, but it is what it is. So that's my opinion.
Big thing we preach is transparency. And we want transparency. That way there, we can fix what's wrong. Without having that, we can't do anything about it.
And it's still that wastewater plan. I think I told everybody, it's an open door. You guys can go wherever you want. Nothing to hide there. It is what it is. Broken, good, bad, ugly, whatever it is. It is what it is. And I expect the same thing as well.
With the wastewater, you're doing a damn good job.
I appreciate it.
And I'd like to see that continue.
Yes, sir. That's definitely my first, number one priority.
And I believe for this position, if there's anybody for that job, you're that person.
We appreciate it.
One of the things I can expect from Robert is he does bring problems and a lot of times solutions with them. But it's not like I have to ask, good, bad, or indifferent. He'll be there. He stops by a minimum of three or four times a week. So he's very proactive in bringing suggestions, problems, or even good news to me. I don't have to ask the questions.
That's good.
Yeah. So it's very, as you said, transparent.
Right. That's good. That's what we want. Thank you.
And I think his leadership abilities commands loyalty from his people. And, you know, he leads from the front.
Lead by example.
Any other questions? Mr. Miranda, you, we talk a lot. And so our goal of this commission is after going the past few years and seeing that dropping it all on the shoulders of one person is probably not the way we need to progress. So it is the encouragement of this commission that you give the people in place to support you. We are making great strides. We have our finances now in capable hands. We are striving to provide, get all of our areas into equally capable hands. And this is, as I told you, it's your decision. But the main thing is, is that you get, you spread the responsibility to people that can handle it. And I think your choice at this point is really, really good. So, that way.
Yes, sir. And if things start to backtrack and, you know, for whatever reason, not able to do both, we can revisit this. As I said, it's not a fifty-fifty. He's gonna split down the middle. Even if he gives twenty percent, just having, you know, because I can't be there every hour of the day. I cannot be that involved. I wanna be, but I just, there's not enough hours in the day. But if he could give twenty percent of his time, and hopefully someone else in the wastewater department can fill that void and step up, it creates an opportunity for staff in that department.
Absolutely. All right. We appreciate everything you do, boys.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Mr. Miranda, we're not gonna go very far. Discussion of the renegotiation of the Lovington Wellness Center contract.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I just wanted to open the dialogue. We had an agreement with Norley when the wellness center was built in 2016. They have about ninety-eight hundred dollars a month. It comes down to a hundred and five thousand dollars a year to Norley Hospital as our part of the wellness center project. It was Mr. David Shaw's idea. And I'd like to confer with Patrick on this, that in his willingness to help out the city, he came up with an idea that he would basically do away with this agreement if the city covered the water cost for the wellness center alone. And I would, I would probably include wastewater, not the whole hospital, not the waste management free roll-offs that they use, which is a thousand dollars a month. So because we don't have accurate data on the reads from the waste, from the wellness center, we're still trying to get an accurate number. But we estimate that they use about fifteen thousand dollars worth of water and sewer a year. So basically, Mr. Shaw's plan would save the city eighty thousand dollars a year. I don't know if this comes into cover. Is it a donation? Is it trading services for, you know? But he would do away, it was his idea, do away with this agreement. It's a good little gesture to the city. And I, we estimate we'd save about eighty-five thousand a year from this. So I just wanted to put it out there. He's gotta, you know, bring it to his board. But we currently owe this hundred and five thousand for the past year. So we have to pay that. But going forward, maybe we could change this agreement. If it doesn't violate any kind of.
Patrick, you had a thought on it?
Well, I think, I think the way to do it is, you know, what the numbers are so we know exactly what we're talking about. And then maybe rather than do away with our obligations under the existing contract, change those obligations because that seems to be something that was acceptable. You know, we participated in the community wellness center, contributed a certain portion, just be positive impact on the community. And so I think that was a good choice. So rather than, you know, do away with contract, I think we just change maybe the terms and conditions that obligate us to either A, you know, pay X number of dollars per year be able to donate something in kind as far as water and sewer services. So it's certainly something to take a look at, especially since it's gonna reduce our costs. But we need to get a little bit more data on it. I think it's something that's possible, doable, and defensible also from inside that.
That's the key word, data. We need data. We need to know how many people are going, what frequency, what rate are they going? If you got five people going, couple times a month, is what do we even have it for? So I'd like to know. I understand. I understand. But I'd like to know how many people we have going, how many people are using it? And it's even beneficial. I understand that. We're looking to, I don't wanna use the wrong word. We're looking to work it that it's beneficial. But like I'm saying, if we don't have anybody going.
We're already obligated to a hundred thousand.
Right, this year.
Every year.
Every year. How long was that contract for?
It started in two thousand sixteen. I don't know. I don't know.
I think this is the original contract. Because I know, I'm getting that the school opted to not renew it. And I think that's the option for this group. I appreciate what you're saying.
Yeah. But we need.
But there's a couple years. We need to charge.
That's right. Yeah.
But, you know.
The main thing is continues with the negotiation and.
Whatever. You know, I just think that we need to continue this to put our, our, you know, I don't. And if you look at the big picture, who is gonna go swimming pool? So that's, that's the starting point.
Right.
So if we, the city might not ever build another swimming pool or renovate the current swimming pool. So that's, that's the cost saving difference. Because if we don't do it, we could, we could, you know, we at least have something in, in, in the community that we do have swimming pools. Second of all, lift stations, we're gonna have the lift station. And we're already saving, let's say, eighty thousand a year. Like you just, you know, you need to calculate a lift station. That, that'll help, a new lift station. So, I mean, the big picture is that in the end, we benefit. Because if we, if we opt out, we don't assist, then, then we have no say in, in the pool. And I'd like to at least have a say that, that maybe we, that is gonna be the future pool. And how can we make it broader to serve our community? Because, you know, we're gonna come up with four men or an equal, you know? So.
I dare imagine.
Yeah, exactly. So, you know, so I look at the bigger picture. I like, I like that, that idea that you showed off.
He brought it to me and it was just in the interest of saving the city some money.
And we need a wellness center. We just definitely, it's part of, it's part of the, it's part of the willingness of the public.
I don't know how many city employees use it. I know I do love it. It's twenty dollars a month in the city.
I know you're, you're that question.
It must be nice.
So, yeah, it must be. Every time I went COVID closed, it's like I'm going. But the, we're kinda stuck at a two-way sword here. But we just got through talking about heart, unity, and trying to stiff-arm the county and that they're gonna put their bill in. And yet, we're throwing the hospital out to the wolves, like, bend for yourselves. So I'm not trying to, I just wanna find, I get some data and see who are going. But we're utilizing that. Right. So with, but whether we're utilizing or not, still, it's kinda one of those trade-offs. Where we're supporting our community in some, some aspect. Because, I mean, if you look at it like this, it was costing us fifteen, ten thousand dollars a month to operate our swimming pool, our, whatever that thing is out there. So at fifteen thousand dollars a year, what a savings. So I have, I have no problem with spending fifteen thousand dollars a year or twenty thousand dollars a year so people can continue to use our wellness center to help them promote this and get it going. Because they, based off that study, if I remember right, it's a ten-year cycle. Before that thing ever kicks off, it starts, you know, pretty much ending for itself and needing less help. So they were hoping to get the five-year cycle out and then the next five would finish up. But I think it's a ten-year thing. But.
Well, I mean, the term of the contract is only five years. That which is the cost of this contract. But you're right. And you kind of assumed that everybody was still preaching to support it. So.
I mean, no, we got bills during COVID.
We didn't. They didn't. They did. I, yeah. But, I mean, to me, it's, it makes sense, you know? We have a swimming pool, we're utilizing and adding funds to make sure that they operate that or however we go, however we wanna make that work. But, yeah, it's supporting, again, a heart, one of the largest employers and everything like that. I mean, so, yeah. These positions we get ourselves into.
Any further on this items? Hearing that? All right. We will move on. All right. Change that. We're gonna go to Ms. Ball now.
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, from good health to questionable. Feeling better. You're both feeling better. Okay.
Mayor, Commissioner, you ready? Okay, so cannabis drive-through, that is actually in our ordinance and is not allowed. Did not know that was in our ordinance. So speaking with the attorney and everything, we did talk about how, when the cannabis ordinance was coming about, there was never actually the conversation that this should be a thing, right? So we have a cannabis drive-through facility. That was licensed and is in this operation. So I needed to bring that to your attention and find out what we need to do about it. As of this year, he's licensed, he's operating. There's, you know, it would take quite a bit for us to legally pull that back. It would not be good, I think, about it. So going forward, what is our view on the, what is commission view on the drive-through? Is that something we, had to have that in the ordinance? Because I don't remember that conversation. I didn't write the ordinance. Therefore, it was overlooked, but that was in there by me.
Question should be, what is our legal analysis?
Well, I didn't write the ordinance either. I think at that time, the administration decided that the staff, one of the city employees should, should write the ordinance. So my guess is that person probably didn't cut in case, based on a couple of other ordinances that were available other than southeast New Mexico. So I, I don't, I remember there's a number of issues that we talked about at the meetings about what was important to the commission at the time, members of the public. I don't ever remember a drive-through being an issue. Like I said, I didn't write the ordinance. An employee wrote the ordinance. It passed. And it was brought to my attention about two weeks ago where the city approved, I think, did a pre-inspection of a facility. And they said, hey, we're gonna do this and that. One of the things they were planning on doing is putting a drive-through. That was approved. The construction was done. It's, it's open, it's open for business. And so now we have a city ordinance that says no drive-through, but yet we have, the city approved a, a drive-through for the city. So that's kinda where we are. So my recommendation would be to go back and take this look at.
Make yourself aware of ordinancees. That's my mid-irony.
That would be good advice. Yes. The other thing would be to go back and take a look and say, hey, is this something that was really important to us? What, what do we have to take a look at? One of our options, we could say, do we wanna go back in and amend the cannabis ordinance to remove that portion of it? Have we ever had any other businesses come to us and say, we wanna do a drive-through and another different part of our staff said, no, you can't? What, should we, should we amend that? What's the council's position on that, commission's position? Or do we wait and go back and say, I think it's gonna be difficult if we say, well, your, your license is for a year. Would you come to renew it? Not despite the fact we told you, you could construct this. Now we're not gonna do it based on that sort of. So we're kinda stuck between a rocky and hard place.
So how does this, does this mirror the state? Does the state allow drive-throughs or does they?
In cannabis, yes.
But not in alcohol.
Not in alcohol. And we were trying to mirror alcohol.
That was the whole thing. I mean. That was, that was our, our hindsight. We assumed that when we were mirroring the two, that we were trying to base it as close to alcohol as possible. But yet, Chris brought up a couple points. We're, we're still pretty flexible on some footages and different things that, you know, as the city, we allowed. You know, so, you know, I've had this dream, my pastor is going now. So having the cannabis go off with a drive-through for food, like they had the party bar in Texas. So I never understood why alcohol wasn't that way. But it was previously in the state of New Mexico. And then what, did we get allowed to change?
Yeah, it used to have drive-through windows. And then you couldn't, you had to get, you had to go inside, which, you know, being in the alcohol industry at the time, it was basically so you could see, you would get a visual on the, or the customer. You could verify that he was, he, she was of age, was had a valid ID, all of that. And you could assess the condition. That's, that's where we've gone with alcohol laws. Now, can we equate those, these two items? I had a long discussion with our city manager today. It's very difficult to determine the UI with anything but alcohol. So there's no.
That's why they did not put a limit on that, the partner or anything like that.
So basically, we should probably amend our deal to allow it. And then when the state comes in and figures out, once they have the data to correct everything and go, hey, we can't even drive it up because you gotta be able to stumble into the, and tell them your name and all this stuff. So that would probably be the correct thing to do, in my opinion.
Then the easiest.
Right. You gotta go with the data.
Now, data, data doesn't matter.
I think, I think the other thing that was brought to my attention is that, at least according to this shop owner, there are some individuals that, if they're coming there for medical purposes, don't have many capabilities to get out of there far easily. And then, or is that basically the question being, how good drivers are they anyhow? There are a number of issues. When I can tell you the easiest way to deal is make a change to our ordinance. And one of the things we could do is, you know, we might contact some of the other municipalities that do have drive-ups and say, has the drive-up window been a problem or an issue? And then, we have a little bit more to go on as far as what we've prepared a decision and what we base that decision on. But without a doubt, that's the easiest way, you know? Because otherwise, we're gonna, someone's gonna have to go tell this person, hey, we approved it, and we gave you the thumbs up, and you spent money building and designing your facility that way. And now, you know, we've got real everything back in, if you stick to the code. So, the other thing we need to do too is do it quickly, because if we are gonna make a change, it's not really fair to have one business that has had that opportunity when others, you know, we're gonna be. If somebody comes in tomorrow and says they want a drive-up window, we probably need to tell them yes, because we gotta treat everybody the same. Not a good position to be in, but that is.
Will we be able to look in other municipalities?
So, and that was a point that the owner did bring up to me, is that it's, that most of his sales through his window are for medical. He said, if I have recreational, they usually wanna come in and browse, look at the different products. He said, medical, they know what they need, they come in, they pull up the drive-up, they produce their ID, and we fill in our prescriptions.
Can, speaking of this, there's data. Can we ask him to kind of give us a, some data that supports that? Either in customer account or?
I cannot.
And that's another point we talked about today, is pharmacies have drive-ups. I'm not, I'm not equating their legal drugs, put it that way, either way. So.
You can get in a pan or a hospital service.
Exactly. And I never understood the, I mean, I knew the intent, but I don't know that it truly changed anything.
Can you put it in the ordinance that it can only be for medical purposes to go through the?
That would be hard to cover, as us ourselves, that would be hard to cover.
No, but I'm just saying, since he told you it was for medical purposes, then that way, he can, you can say, yeah, you got the window, you told us this is what it was for.
Well, I don't know if that was the initial discussion as far as, he might say, that's who uses it the most, but I think it would probably put more burden on us to manage that. You know, if we put a ordinance out there that we're not ever gonna enforce, it's really just wasting time.
Then they're just there to show that, they're not there to release or expose the businesses.
But I think that's most definitely the easiest way out of this predicament.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
All right. Anything further on this side?
No, I just.
What was your third?
I got one more thing. City manager.
Yes, sir.
Make sure you involve the legal counsel.
Yes, sir.
Because this is why, one of the reasons why. I know, I'm just saying, not picking on you, just, I know you're new to the ballgame, but.
It wasn't him.
Yeah, it wasn't him, but I just say. I feel more comfortable with all of the counsel, you know? Because we get that outside opinion, you know, instead of our own opinion. So, yeah, that's the one, I don't know, but responsible, yeah.
Okay, so the next point on my discussion here, if you guys wanna flip to the next page. It's about cannabis, it's about greenhouses. And our cannabis ordinance says nothing about greenhouses, right? It just describes what a producer is, which is basically somebody who runs a greenhouse and grows it, right? So, in our ordinance, we have two varying things about growing and selling produce or product out of your home or another business. So, in our special use permit, it says that the city, for a greenhouse to operate, you're actually supposed to give them a special use. I'm supposed to bring a greenhouse to use for special use. Nothing in cannabis regulations says that.
Oh, wait, okay, wait. You'd have to bring it to the commission.
To get a special use permit, that's what our code says about greenhouses, that's why I printed that off. But then, in another section of our code, two more pages over, in the A zone, which is residential zone, you're allowed to have a nursery or a gardening truck. You can't sell the product from there, which none of our cannabis nurseries do. They take it elsewhere to be sold. So, we have very conflicting codes, which is another point that the lady who wrote our comprehensive plan several years ago, I met her at the conference I was just at, and she said, have you updated your code? Because that was one of her very first suggestions to James Williams at the time, was that our code be entirely updated. It is very old, there are several things that conflict with each other. And every time we add a new code and don't go through the rest of the code, we're adding more conflict. So, I need some advice on what your guys' thoughts are on looking at cost of actually rewriting our code.
So, I'm gonna take Patrick's position, is what is the cost of not rewriting?
One of the things, if you remember back when we were discussing cannabis, basically, the state said, oh, there's two things you should be able to look at, hours of operation and density. And those are the normal things that a municipality deals with. And so, had we dealt with those two things, this would be easy. Because all we would do is say, well, what does the state require? You've got all of their state requirements. So, that's one of the things, and if you think about what I tell you all the time, it's not all the time, but a lot is, don't come up with a new ordinance if we've got an old one that can solve the problem. Sounds good, but it does cause more problems. I have no idea what it costs to revise it from the standpoint of somebody sitting down, looking at it, saying, okay, you know, what can you do with a greenhouse in Zone A? What era was that written? Probably the forties, maybe the fifties, and how have things changed? What else is out there that's changed? I don't know if that's really money well-spent, considering where we are. I think that we should take a look at what impacts us the most, focus on those. And I think now would be a good opportunity to go back and take a look at other places that have looked at cannabis ordinances and try to pare ours down a little bit, so that we're not spending overabundance of time either trying to police it or trying to deal with, you know, part A doesn't match with part Y. Because it's just not something that we need to be doing. So, we can take a look at it, you know, what's the cost to rewrite all of our ordinances? I don't know, but we don't have that kind of money, I promise you that. So, we need to focus on what's really important, what we use the most, and really get back to where that money and time is well-spent. But now, now's the time, we're gonna have to make some changes to the cannabis ordinance to go back and look at what else is in there that we've really took back. So, it's a good place to start. You would be unhappy if I gave you a bill for rewriting all our ordinances. And then, what would happen is we still have to implement, so there's that time and effort. So, if you really wanna go back and take a look at it, my advice would be to start with things that we could get off the books that maybe were relevant in fifties, sixties, but don't have any kind of relevance today. So, it's easier to, you know, take something off the book than necessarily rewrite. So, that's a good place to start.
Question? Mr. Miranda, I suggest you start getting some other people, because you're gonna be busy man. Thank you. All right. I just saw David, I didn't get to the last name.
Sir, no, I'm discussing the advertising for police chief, but since we've already made our decision, I know the contract still hasn't been signed, but the process lengthy, and I know that across the street, they need direction. And I just think we just need to go and move on. By the time we average ties, by the time we're already getting our, you know, moving forward, it's still two weeks, two weeks, four weeks out. So, the longer we prolong this, the more this gonna affect across the street. So, I think we just need to move on. That's the one reason why we're on, we just need to move on. That's all I.
Any questions? Thanks, everybody. All right, we do the next item, discussion of city manager contract. I put that on there, we put that on there in this, in the non-action, because we weren't sure what we could do in closed session, so we wanted to give the opportunity, didn't wanna violate closed session mandates. In discussion with Patrick, we can do either, if we're gonna have a discussion, because the goal is to officially have a city manager, you know, city manager, until we are contracted with. So, we need to get that into place. We can discuss openly and what the different items that we would request be in the contract. If you're comfortable with doing that, we can do it here. Or, if we're uncomfortable, then we can also do it in closed session. So, it really is up to the commission how we wanna do it. I have no problem ever speaking in public, so, I mean, as far as, this would be the time that I am comfortable with, but at the same time, if there are issues that we would like to maybe safeguard against, that have happened in the past, and we could go into a closed session and have them, and then, unfortunately, in all of our attempts, we did put an action on them. The closed sessions, so.
We can, we can have a closed session and we give direction.
We will give what we want to see, and then get that drafted, and then at the next meeting or whatever, get it signed, yes. That is correct. So, we can discuss it here and move on, we can skip this position and do it in closed session.
Just do it in closed session, where we can move on, we have some action on some other people. Go home and go to bed.
All right, this brings us to our action items.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for approval of ordinance, six oh two annexation and zone change to the Marinettis property.
Okay, motion second. On the approval of this ordinance, any discussion? So, this is yours.
Yeah, we advertised it, I got no comments or feedback from the advertising of it. The ordinance is just annexing in that yellow piece property and listing both properties as commercial.
Okay, in these, in the map, not this particular, there's another yellow highlighted piece in that, that maybe it's down in the bottom left. I saw it. It's not included.
In the packet, no, it's not included.
Okay.
That's where a yellow, that's where, so that's where a Zone B already exists down there.
It looked like a trucking company's, whatever.
Yeah, it's all this down here, it's actually Zone B, this whole area, this is commercial for.
Well, it just said, it was yellow highlighted, and I didn't know, I didn't think we had ever talked about that in our discussion. Okay.
It was nothing to do with this.
Any further discussion? Janet, roll call, please.
Commissioner Gangi.
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe.
Yes.
Commissioner White.
Yes.
Mayor Rogers.
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three, Dad one oh one, three oh seven North Commercial variance request, twenty-four-foot backyard setback.
We have motion in second.
Mayor Richard, so we had mobile home moving, and they came in, got all their paperwork started. We did the criminal area inspection, they had the site markers exactly where they needed to be. Then dirt work guys come in and did dirt work, then mobile home people come in and put in mobile home. We went to do the final, and it's four foot different than what it was the first time we lived in it. So, that threw them into being non-conformant with the backyard setback. They, it's twenty-four foot, we have approved waylifts and backyard setbacks. It does leave them room, if they ever did a storage building, it could be a very small one, they still have room for a small one back there. The ownership said they really, they kind of liked the idea of being back a little further off of the busy commercial street. So, it does give them that little bit of buffer. If you change the view, you also see there's still ample space, it's not a health and security or health and safety issue, it's not a fire issue with any adjacent buildings. So, planning and zoning did approve this in the last regular meeting to allow for the twenty-four-foot backyard setback. Twenty-eight is the required, it's only four foot, fifty percent of the required. You have any questions for me? The owners are here in the present, they have made all attempts to do everything they can. The cost of moving them all home, the four feet, will be almost as much as the cost of putting it there in the first place, so.
You said that it does not conflict with any utilities.
No, no, so. The utilities are all in the alley, so, yeah.
Mr. Gangi?
Oh, I'm just gonna vote no, I mean, I understand, we know that, you know? But I understand, I mean, it wasn't, they did everything right, it just somebody messed up, but I just, to my stance of a vote no on all variances, but this one makes perfect sense, I understand it. But I just, just ride this horse into the ground.
No, you're not, because I am stuck because I don't like non-conformant on there. I mean, on, on code, because we invite everybody to say, hey, they're not gonna, I mean, I can put it where I want, and as long as it's not an obvious, whatever, there's a passing, okay? Now, go ahead.
So, the question is, I mean, because I don't wanna say I'm not getting it, so.
I understand.
So, the question would be is, when you flip a coin, she can go a vote no, so the other one's gonna be yes.
Exactly.
But I don't think they get it, I just wanna stand my ground, and.
Yep, that's true, you're gonna have to do what there's. Now, I also have been in the instance that I had to ask for variance, because we built two houses to then blow through the street. So, I understand, I know, I've done it.
Yeah, I wonder here.
Anyway.
Let me ask Crystal, now, if, is this variance going with the property?
Yes, variance goes with the property.
Sells?
So, if the owner sells and moves the mobile home off.
Then it goes away.
It goes away.
Right, right, but if they sell, the mobile home stays.
The mobile home stays, the home still looks, as long as its property stays like it is, it's a variance.
That's what they kind of put four more in there.
And just to say, you know, we have granted variances with much smaller setbacks.
Okay. Any further discussion? Janet?
Commissioner Bowe.
Yes.
No.
Commissioner video?
Yes.
Gang, Commissioner Gangi.
I wanna make sure it goes through, even though I'm voting a vote no, I'll say yes.
I just took the whatever off.
Yeah.
Right. Okay.
Did you vote?
She didn't call my name, but yes.
I did, I just did.
Yes.
See, that was my position, it didn't matter at that vote.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution twenty twenty-three, Dad one oh two, approval sale, approved sale of airplane hangar eighteen at the Zipp Franklin Airport, that they didn't know we own. We have motion in second. Are you gonna leave?
Yes.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, back in twenty twenty-one, the commission passed. Mr. Mayor, commissioners, back in 2021, the commission passed a resolution number 2021-096 approving this, the transfer of hanger number 18 at the Zip Franklin Airport to Lee County. It was in bad condition, of no use to us. Apparently, it was never adopted by Lee County, so the transfer was never complete, even though the ordinance was passed. Lee County no longer wants the hanger. And it's even worse condition. This probably should have been a discussion item, but I assume that when this was, the original ordinance was passed, all the homework had been done. But I was approached by Mr. Don Pitts. He wishes to purchase the hanger from the city for $5,000, which is apparently under comparable value. I just don't know if we need to do more homework in terms of disposing of seed property. Although it was passed two years ago, but it was a transfer or donation to Lee County.
Okay, I spoke to Patrick on this, and so would you restate what?
Yeah, Pitts is here, by the way.
I know he is.
I think that, in what is it? If the city had not offered the proper channels 21 to take a look at either a sale or transfer of whatever it is, my understanding of that airplane hanger is that there's more liability to that airplane hanger than value. And so I think when we try to give it to the county, the county looked at it and said, we don't want it. That should give us a pretty good indication of what we're dealing with. And so without having take place in 21, then I think what we need to do, easiest thing to do is just be maybe an RFP and see what happens from there. I think, you know, Mr. Pitts is probably gonna put it to very good use. I don't see a lot of people bidding on it, but I think if that had not taken place in 21, that would be the easiest way to go. And then just run, run that quickly through the DFA and have them take a look at it. See if we could get somebody that was qualified to look at that hanger and say, this is, this is the present value of the hanger, and that's, that's gonna cover spaces for. So probably what we would need to do, and we're gonna get that accomplished, is a motion to table that gives the city manager an opportunity to track down some of that information, start the process on the RFP.
And it also removes it from our list of stuff we get.
Value or whatever that we're working on.
So, yeah, I mean, it would be a wise thing to, to offload.
So I'll make the motion to table this until other information can be gathered.
That's it, we're ready to talk about it again.
So if we table it, then we have to give it a date, so we're gonna say months from now?
I would postpone it because table, tabling says you're gonna produce it at the next meeting.
Okay, postpone, so postpone, okay. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to postpone this until additional information can be retrieved. Sure. All right, there was taken to postpone this particular resolution and more, more, so you see. That's right. Do we need to vote on this? Yes. Yes, Jen.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 103. Point David Miranda to the solid waste authority.
There are more than second for this resolution. Any discussion? Shannon?
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner video?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion for resolution 2023 dash 104. Approved advertising ordinance 603 to refill ordinance 551 Lita project number one. Henry and his tired, Elpio dash 2017 dash 19 Drylands Brewing Company.
Motion second. That's resolution.
Mr. Mayor, commissioners, I don't quite understand it, but I was contacted by Mr. Roper of the EDD, and his letter reads the part, "As you may be aware, City of Lovington acting on behalf of the State of New Mexico entered into a Lita grant agreement with Drylands Brewing Company back in May of 2017. On August 10th, 2020, the city passed resolution 2020-69 approving a release of grant of lien for the legally described property of 817 West Adams. State of New Mexico approved this. And the EDD has reviewed all submitted documents, has confirmed that Drylands Brewing Company's operation in Lovington has provided a full return on investment to the state and Lee County and Lovington further PPA agreement. As per the executed PPA and the associated IGA of the New Mexico EDD is requesting closing Lita project number LCL 2017-19 by passing a repealing ordinance for ordinance number 551 per Lita statute."
Are there any questions on this? I'll be happy to, Junior, I can speak, I say.
I just got, I just got one. I know that we had the resolution 2020 69 and then 2020-70. 2020-70 was part of, that's not included in this system.
No, sir.
Mayor, commissioners, Junior Hernandez with Lovington DC, so this is actually Main Street project. But what it is, is so the state come in and just to verify that they had met all the quotas of manufacturing of the beer. And so the only thing that they're doing is releasing it. So they hold on to it for two years, three years, depending on the project. But that's the only thing that they're doing here is releasing that project, saying that they have no clawback to any money that was given. They met what was promised to the state, to the county, to the city, and that's basically it. And it was for the manufacturing. Okay.
Thank you. Any further question? Jen?
Uh, Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner Gandy?
Yes.
Commissioner video?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
What? Commissioner White?
Make a motion.
Sorry, I have one second to take a deal.
Well, y'all are taking it, obviously.
You got something?
Oh, that sounds good, the brain must have, and that can't be long.
Do you hear that?
I've got a couple of questions.
Are you taking interventions?
As far as vendor 11, 349, New Mexico Junior County, Training and Outreach.
Well, each?
Each.
Interesting.
And that's for the EMS, EMTs. How many students?
I've got four in the intermediate, four in the basic class, and then I've got one in med class. So I've got a total of nine people in class right now.
How long is that for?
Well, basic and intermediate will go through and the basics will, they're intermediate classes from August through December.
So. Okay, okay, I just wanted to ask on that. As far as with that police break room renovation, how was that coming along?
Early stages, I believe. I know it is just a couple of weekends ago. The contractor, Troy McKee, he was in there getting stuff out and tearing stuff down, and it's pretty much empty at this point with a few older walls, where I think some of the wall might have to get redone. But old carpet stripped out. It's probably like housing triggered, just to keep it light and time. But infancy stages, I believe.
That would be calling his cap a lot.
I was gonna ask, how was that, because I didn't see anything on there as far as where it was coming out of, so.
Yeah, that's part of the grant of 350,000 that PD and FDR go split for the building. So I need to submit all those receipts and everything to myself and Christine so that we can get reversed.
Because I said I didn't see where it was coming out, and that's what I'm asking.
That's what the quote stripper on my stuff there coming out of that as well.
Okay, okay. And how are we coming on that Silver Miller and Associates? I see it was another 31,000.
That's wastewater, and that's coming out of COVID.
Right, but I mean, how are they coming along in the project? Because I haven't heard nothing on it, so where are we at?
Well, some of that is consulting fees for Leo Wilson and other, you know, other.
Art, yeah. Leo's yard.
No, okay. Okay, well, I'd have to get you a breakdown of what it was done, but I know it's wastewater, and it came out of COVID.
Right.
So I don't know if it's one particular project, is that wastewater dream, if that's gonna be an ongoing project for the next five years? Just a question, how much money do you consider?
Yeah, and I just like to know where we're spending the money at, where it's going to, not that we're paying for it twice.
And, actually, I do know what that's from. So that was supposed to come out of last year's budget for the asset management and the last year of the year. And the POs were made, the checks were never cut. So the 129,000 that we had home for last fiscal year, turns out we have to pay it this fiscal year, not just for them. So they're billing us not in one big chunk, but technically that's our asset management program. So that was supposed to come out of last year, last year, it's running down. They cut the POs, we never cut the check. And we had the money at that time, seeing as it's gonna be a budget adjustment this year.
That's it for me.
Anyone else? There you go, Jen?
Commissioner White?
Yes.
Commissioner video?
Yes.
Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Yes. Mr. Mayor, I'd like to go into closed session pursuant to section 10-15-1 in MSA 1978 subsection these two regarding limited personal matters in our blue chief, city manager contract.
Mr. Gandy would like to go in. Anyway. Jen, there was a
Commissioner Gandy?
Yep.
Commissioner Bowe?
Yes.
Commissioner White, yes, Mayor Roberts?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Okay. My name, sorry, I was afraid.
David Jordan.